Okay, it's two o'clock and called this meeting of Committee of the Whole, uh, meeting to order April twenty-third on a Monday. We have a full, uh, house today, beautiful spring day finally. It's good to see everybody out here and it's good to see, um, that we have thirteen people who are interested in this position. We had fourteen, one dropped off today, so we're down to thirteen, lucky thirteen. So that's, uh, that's, that's exciting. I think that's a really, a really good thing. Um, uh, call to order and is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest under Municipal Conflict of Interest Act from any of the councillors? Councillor Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, item fourteen point six, uh, the applicant is a tenant.
Okay, thank you. We did have a closed session, uh, that we just got out, out of and, um, we met under section, uh, two thirty-nine, two E, F and C of the Municipal Act as amended pertaining to a matter regarding litigation or potential litigation and, uh, a matter about the disposition of land, uh, for the municipality. We have nothing to report at this time, uh, out of that closed session. And we have our recommendation in front of us. I have a recommendation here that the Council of Township of Wellington confirmed the agenda for its meeting held April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. Move for that recommendation? Councillor Fisher seconded by? Councillor Van Luin all in favor? And we have an agenda. So then, one of the main things that we're talking about today and we're doing that first is about a council vacancy. And I think this is the first time in the history of Centre Wellington that we've ever had to do, uh, a council vacancy in, in the middle of a, a term. Is that, is that accurate? Okay, as far as she knows, okay, that's good. So that's exciting. So we have, uh, we have thirteen people who are gonna come and speak to council. Um, five minutes per, per delegate, um, and we have, uh, oh, we have a bell, we have a bell here. So our clerk is gonna be the one that hits the bell if you, you hit your five. I'm not gonna be the bad person here, she's gonna be the bad person. Um, and we agreed to this beforehand, so there's no back out of it now, Carrie. Um, so we have, uh, we have a list of thirteen, so the idea would be that you come and you, you speak to, um, whatever you wanna speak to. Um, and councillors, we have a maximum of one question per councillor to each member, okay? Um, and you don't have to ask a question, obviously. So that's, that's how we're, how we're gonna do things. Is there anything else that I have to? That I have to talk about as far as the rules go? No, that's good. Everybody okay with councillors? The first time we've gone through this process. So I know that, uh, our clerk has worked hard to make sure that the process is consistent with other municipalities. So, uh, we wanna make sure that we do this in open and transparent manner. Um, and the, and the nominations were, were opened from when in April? Was it April third? When did we open them up? Sorry, this, I'm ad-libbing as I go here.
Yeah, I think it was, you declared on April the third.
That's right.
So we started accepting nominations the very next day.
Okay, and so they've come in since then?
Yep.
So, um, thank you very much, everybody put their name forward. Um, uh, I'm very excited about the number of people that we have who are interested in, in, uh, playing a role in this community, um, as a member of council. So before anything hap- uh, before we go through it, um, just wanted to say first of all, thank, thanks for putting your name forward and coming today. I really, really appreciate it and I know your community really appreciates it as well. So, go in order?
Uh, alphabetical order, yes.
Alphabetical order, oh, we are very good here. Okay, so the first person that we have on the list is Kathy Bransky. Welcome Kathy.
Mayor and council, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you regarding my qualifications to be a member of council. You have all seen me seated on the other side of this table many times. Most of you don't know how I ended up here. I have lived in Fergus since nineteen seventy-six and in two thousand and three, I ran for council and lost by less than a hundred votes. After this close call, I breathed a sigh of relief and immediately decided to find a way to volunteer so I could help make Centre Wellington a place I wanted to continue to live in. Heritage was always an interest of mine and I was very dismayed to see the demolition of many of our old buildings. I applied and was appointed to the Heritage Committee in two thousand and four and have volunteered on this committee ever since, being elected the chair since two thousand and eight. The Planning Advisory Committee seemed a good balance with heritage and so I volunteered on this committee until it disbanded. We spent a lot of time rewriting all the zoning bylaws to combine them as this hadn't been done since Centre Wellington had amalgamated. In the last number of years, I have been fortunate to have had the opportunity to volunteer on the Council Remuneration Committee, Committee of Adjustment, the Growth Strategy Committee, as well as continuing on the Heritage Committee. I have attended many of the open houses and public meetings that council has hosted as I wish to be informed about what's happening in our community. I have participated in on, in all the online questionnaires on Connect CW. I am delighted to be able to watch the council meetings at home now with a cup of coffee instead of attending in person. I have also made a point of attending at least one day of budget meetings every year for the last four years. I have been an owner and operator of a small business and have studied business at college, so I am able to understand budgets and financial planning. I spent many years as an early childhood educator, as a teacher and supervisor, so I have experience managing people and lots of patience. I feel that after my many years of volunteering and all the things that I have learned about the Planning Act, the Heritage Act, Places to Grow, et cetera, I've acquired enough knowledge to be a valuable participant at the council table. In my committee work, I've gotten to know some of the staff and have worked with a few of them. I am sure I will have a lot to learn as a councillor, but my learning curve should be shorter as I am very informed about what's happening in the community. I am retired and have the time necessary to devote to this new endeavor. Please consider me for this position. Thank you. Questions, I guess?
Thanks Kathy. Any questions from council? Councillor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. Effective, uh, civic engagement doesn't just ask residents for their opinion on community issues, rather it provides them with tangible opportunities to participate in the development of policies and programs that directly address those issues. Please tell me if you agree or disagree with that statement and explain why.
I agree. Um, I think that, um, I have always tried to, uh, voice an opinion when, about most things that are going on in the community, uh, when asked and lots of times when not asked, I'm sure. But I always try, I feel it's really important to be educated first and to know what's going on before you give an opinion. So that, that way, um, it's an informed decision and not off the cuff. And that's one of the reasons that I have always and continue to go to as many open houses and, and be aware of all the transportation plans that are going on and all the infrastructure changes and the bridges. So I have tried to really make myself aware of all the things that are going on. And so that way I feel as though I can make an informed, uh, opinion if I'm asked. But I do think it's important.
Any questions from council? Councillor Macklin?
Thanks Kelly. Uh, Kathy, you were on the Planning Advisory Committee, but we still had one.
Yes.
Do you think we should have one going forward?
Um, I think it was very valuable for the time that we were there, um, before the amalgamation. Uh, Fergus, Alora, um, Bellwood, all the different, uh, spots had different bylaws. So one of the main things that we did was integrate all of those bylaws into the zoning bylaws, so that, uh, did all of Centre Wellington. Um, we also worked on the sign bylaw, so there were a lot of things that we worked on that, uh, needed to be done at that point because of amalgamation. I think that, um, the Growth Strategy Committee is a good, um, sort of substitute for the Planning Advisory Committee because I think that, um, having spent a bit of time on it and knowing that it's going forward, it will address some of the same things that the Planning Advisory Committee did, I think.
Ms. Kathy, anything else? Councillor Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kathy, good to see you.
Thank you.
I know we've served on the Heritage Committee together and I know the good work that you've done. Kathy, this township's strategic plan has five goals. The reliable infrastructure, healthy growth, uh, economic prosperity, pride of place and good government. In your opinion, how should council use this tool for maximum benefit?
Okay, let me think about that for a second. I think that, um, council has really gone out of its way, particularly this last term, to open discussion to the public with, um, the open houses that you've had, with all of the opportunities to make comment on the website and on Connect CW and the open houses that you have. I think that, um, there has been a real opportunity for people to get involved in the community. We've been really fortunate to get money for the bridge downtown and I know i- in, um, in Alora, the walking bridge. I think that there has been a lot of discussion about what to do with the rest of that money. So I think that, uh, having the opportunity to make projects, um, known to council in the information session that you had and, and when people came forward, I think that that was a really valuable tool for council to know what was going on in the community. Oh, do I have to stop? Okay. Sorry Fred. I think I answered your question.
Anything else from council? Okay, thank you very much Kathy.
Thank you.
Gonna call Megan Burke? Welcome Megan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councillors and staff. I appreciate your consideration today and your review of my personal statement. As noted in my statement, I have significant experience working with various levels of gov- of government as well as boards and committees in various capacities. And I will expand on that during the few minutes I have here this afternoon. I was employed in communications at a provincial organization some of you may be familiar with, Grain Farmers of Ontario. This not-for-profit organization works on behalf of Ontario's twenty-eight thousand corn, soy, wheat, barley and oat growers. I had the privilege to lead communications for the organization for eight years. My experience in this role is highly applicable to council duties. At Grain Farmers of Ontario, I led the Communications Committee, the Conference Committee and worked directly with board members and delegates of the organization. I also organized the annual and district meetings, including resolution packages and providing comments towards those resolutions. My level of involvement in these processes indirectly with the Board of Directors allowed me a great education in Robert's Rules of Order, Resolutions, Processes, Effective Meeting Management and Appropriate Conduct. I also gained deep respect for policies and procedures. Because of the inherent importance of following guidelines for policy development, I would like to note that in my, in the creation of my personal statement for today's appointment, I reviewed the council vacancy policy and I included the requirements of name, address and document formatting. I would suggest that, while small details, the attention to these requirements and adherence to the policy are important indicators of one's understanding of bureaucratic systems. Government relations was part, a large part of my past employment as well and my passion for governance has led to me to being in my current position as Regional Communications Manager for Agriculture and Agri-Food Canada. Again, the importance of procedures and policies is essential in my daily work and I have a great understanding of the roles of various levels of government. And last Thursday, during the evening, Fred Dean shared that an effective councillor must love meetings and be good at them. I can tell you, I participate in a lot of meetings on a daily basis, chairing and attending meetings and I pride myself on concise and clear communications and being results oriented. Lastly, I would like to reiterate my passion for rural and agricultural issues. Elected by alumni of the Advanced Agriculture Leadership Program, I am an active member of the program's advisory committee reporting to the Board of Directors for the Rural Ontario Institute. In this capacity, I am closely connected to both rural and agricultural issues and bring forward concerns from alumni. I'm great at gathering information and insights from appropriate audiences and relaying that information effectively around meeting tables. As councillor for Ward Three, it is my intention to bring the same approach of hearing, understanding the concerns of the community and voicing these appropriately and respectfully at council meetings. I know that I am fortunate to have made Fergus my home. I was raised in a small town in Northern Ontario and am thankful to have found such a welcoming rural community here in Centre Wellington. Seeing our mosaic of people grow from farmers, business owners, commuters, young families, seniors, such diversity and such vibrance, the energy of our community is undeniable. With friends and great mentors in municipal politics, I have deep respect for the critical role councillors play and deliver. My heart is in public service and I am compelled to give back to this incredible township in a meaningful way. For me, this is town council. I recognize time is limited, so I will conclude with this. For a helpful perspective, for expertise in governance systems and for passion for public service, I am your candidate. Thank you.
Thanks Megan. Questions from council? Councillor Van Luin?
Thank you. Megan, I understand you live in Ward Three, is that correct?
I live in Ward Four.
Oh, in Ward, Ward Four, okay. Uh, but in Fergus area then?
Yes.
All right, do you feel that you're, with all these meetings, do you feel you're prepared to stand for what you believe in, for what's right for the entire community?
Absolutely. I pride myself on doing just that. I am a good listener and I care deeply for the concerns of people. And as I said, I'm, I'm a public servant at heart and, and that comes with caring for people and, and doing work for people.
Anything, questions from councillor Kittriss?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the township of Centre Wellington could potentially almost double its population in the next twenty-five years. Please comment on what you believe to be the biggest challenge such explosive growth will bring to our community.
Certainly such growth would present multiple challenges. Um, I would suggest that one of the benefits I bring to an issue such as this is that I am one of those people who moved into the town. I understand, uh, new people coming into the community and, uh, the obstacles sometimes to feeling involved and embraced by that community. I, I see myself as offering that to Ward Three as their councillor. Uh, there's a lot of growth in Ward Three and I can relate to a lot of the new people there. I think it's important that those people want, that are new to the community feel, um, a place of, of belonging and want to spend their leisure time and their, uh, disposable income here in our, in our community. And I believe I can bring that perspective forward to the township council.
Councillor Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Megan, the possibility of a commercial water taking operation coming to Centre Wellington lies on our horizon. What do you think is an appropriate position for council to take on that matter?
I think that's a very complex issue. I will share that I have worked in a hydrogeology company and I'm very familiar with aquifer management. I think it's very important that we look at all aspects of that issue. I know that there is a certain not-in-my-backyard perspective on that matter and I'm not against that perspective. I, I understand, I believe we need water, obviously. But I will bring, uh, perhaps a different perspective of aquifer management. And I think it is an issue that needs to be fully assessed and have all the information on the table before I make any kind of comment on a position to take on that.
Any else from council? Okay, thank you very much Megan.
Thank you.
Next we have, uh, Dennis Pradak.
Welcome Dennis. Thank you, Mayor, councilman, staff. Just wanna take the, uh, the chance to thank you all for, for hearing me out and I hope reading my letter as I've not prepared a speech for the moment. But I will say that I think I, I would likely be your greenest candidate up here. Relatively new to this whole scheme, I do have a passion for working within the community and I did apply solely on the fact that I would like to continue that and I see this as a exceptional opportunity to do a, almost like a trial run of a six-month council position before running for a four-year term. I would not know how, I, I assume I would love the position and I'm quite passionate about the community, but to have six months to see if that's right for me and for you seems like a rare opportunity that doesn't come often. Um, I, if possible, I would like to take advantage of that opportunity. Um, myself, I live in Ward Three, I work in Ward Three, uh, run the brew house on the grand and, and through there, most of my community based work has been solidified. Other than that, I, I am free to, to answer any questions that you may have for me and I'm sure that gives you four minutes and thirty seconds to do so, so. Feel free.
Questions from council? Councillor Van Luin?
Thank you Dennis for running, sorry. What are your thoughts on things like transportation master plan and trying to get through, uh, some of the projects like bridge construction that has to happen? How do you feel, uh, do you feel comfortable about voting what's best for the community and not necessarily for the individual person affected? Um, I ask you this question being someone who is largely impacted by the, the new bridge going in, affecting your business and yet it needs to be done for the community. Are you prepared to make those type of difficult decisions as you go forward? Being one that is impacting yourself?
One hundred percent, yeah. Um, from the get-go with the, that St. David's Street Bridge Construction, um, fearful for the business and the impact it will have on us, but definitely see the light at the end of the tunnel and how that was needed. So I have had an optimistic view about it and the plans look beautiful and I'm quite thrilled for, for what's to come. I think even just having lights at the bottom of that from our patio would be gorgeous. But in terms of any decision-making like that, I would be looking long-term for the benefits of the community, community rather than a selfish point of view for sure.
Councillor Morris?
I think I heard you say you're the greenest candidate here, is that what you said?
I'm, I'm assuming, so we'll see.
And I will repeat my question to the previous candidate about the commercial water taking, uh, operation that could come to town. There is a great deal of concern, uh, in the community about our quality and quantity of water. What do you think is the appropriate council response to that challenge?
As I, I'm sure you're already doing, I would, uh, assume to be contacting all environmental organizations that can help, like outsource to people to get the, uh, the knowledge needed to make the right decision on that. Um, what environmentalist groups, what, what impact it's gonna have on our community, pros and cons and weighing them. I think that would be council's main objective there with the water.
Councillor Kittriss?
Centre Wellington has never had a zero percent operational budget increase. Do you think such a goal is possible and how do you think it could best be achieved?
I think that that's something that I would have to research far more before I can make a informed comment on that. To be honest. Hopefully, that's achievable.
Anything else from council? Okay, thank you very much Dennis.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, next up we have, uh, Thomas Fay. Welcome Thomas.
Good day everybody, thanks for being here. Um, probably all of you read my, uh, statement, so I might as well read it over. Uh, reason I'm here because, um, we moved here in two thousand and five and, uh, we adopted this town and, uh, Centre Wellington, it's like a second hometown for us. And, uh, since it's a hometown, I would like to move on a little bit and maybe do something. So this opportunity was good for me to see if I can do something. Uh, my background is, um, more technical, uh, a member of OZET, um, certified member of OZET. So I understand very different aspect of, of problems, uh, projecting, legalities, all that. Also I run my own small business here, so I think it's important to, uh, help a little bit the businesses here. And, um, I know there's lots of project for Centre Wellington and it's not enough money, so it's kinda hard to decide what to do, what not to do. Then, um, I have very good skill sets which you cannot get in schools, so that will, that can be very helpful probably for the council. And basically that's it, so if you have questions, please ask me.
Next Thomas, questions from council? Councillor Macklin?
Thanks Kelly. Um, you mentioned in your, um, write-up, Thomas, that, um, your vision is to continue, uh, with, um, tourism and arts as, can't remember exactly how you read it, but anyhow.
Yes.
Um, do you feel that the township supports the arts the way that they should? Given the, the history of arts and the growth of our community, are we supporting the arts as well as we should?
Well, if we, uh, look at the, uh, provincial and, um, basically the standard in the whole country, I would say it is well-supported. But since I have a European background, I can tell you for sure that, um, in Europe, township like Centre Wellington would be a goldmine for arts. So, yes, you can improve.
Any else from council? Okay, thanks Thomas.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, uh, we have, uh, Robert Foster. Welcome Robert.
Thank you. It was the beginning of hockey season back in the seventies and a sad group of hockey players were moping around the dressing room in the old Fergus Arena. Those boys were sad because, not because they'd lost the game and not because they never made the playoffs. They were sad because Gordy Brown, their coach, had just left the room. And he just told those boys that the arena roof wasn't safe and that the province had just condemned the old Fergus Arena right in the middle of hockey season. Now those boys were thrilled when the new sportsplex opened, pad eight. They felt playing in the sportsplex, it was just like playing in the NHL for those guys. But that excitement was short-lived. Just about a year after the sportsplex opened, the roof was sliding off the walls of the building and hockey season was cancelled one more time. For me, that was the end of my hockey career, but it was the beginning of something more important. Mayor Linton, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you as a candidate for Ward Three nomination to this council. And I learned some very important lessons back then playing hockey in the old, in the, uh, new arenas in Fergus. The whole experience gave me a, a great interest in municipal public services and a desire to work hard for our community. And that's why I'm standing here today, to work hard for a better community. And I bring education and experience and a commitment to public service to this table. I attended Wilford Laurier University, completed many courses in accounting and finance and public administration. My time at Laurier gave me a very strong analytical and accounting skill and a sharp eye for the numbers. I took many courses in history and geography and political science. I developed a very good knowledge of Ontario geography and history. I wrote several research papers in urban geography, including one on the town of Fergus and one on the county of Wellington. That's excellent academic preparation for the role here on council. My first job was helping my dad with his veterinary practice here in Centre Wellington. And that gave me a good understanding of the challenges farmers in our township are facing today. Our high school class had to scatter across the province because there were very few opportunities here for young people. I fully understand how we could make things better with a stronger economy and that means we have to set a climate where entrepreneurship can thrive. And that means investing in our infrastructure, better bridges, better roads and better transportation. I spent fifteen years in the wholesale grocery sector calling on grocers and restaurants and chefs across the province. And I got a great understanding of what it's like to run a small business and helping those folks. I've also spent fifteen years with the government of Canada, working in financial administration, in program delivery and in- and in accounting. As a result, I've developed a good handle on budgets, on program delivery, and budget management. That's thirty years of professional experience in both the private sector and the public sector. I've also served as president of the Fergus Alora Rotary Club. Our club helped fund the state park playground and some of the CT scanner at the Groves Hospital. We now have a beautiful park in Ward three and we have state, state-of-the-art diagnostics in our hospital. I'm a member of the Royal Canadian Legion, I've chaired the Government of Canada Workplace Campaigns. But the best preparation I think I can bring to this table is four years of experience sitting in that chair. I chaired the rec committee on the previous council. I've served on the hospital board as council's representative. I've served on the budget committee and the finance committee, and I fully understand the difficulty in setting municipal budgets each year. I've attended AMO training sessions for councillors on a broad variety of subjects, including the roles of councillors and staff, the Municipal Act, the Places to Grow Act, and the Green Belt. My friends, Centre Wellington is my hometown and I'd like to ensure that we never have to close another arena in the middle of hockey season again. I have a strong knowledge of the geography and the history and the economy of our community. I understand the challenges we face in renewing our infrastructure, developing our economy, and managing urban growth. I'd like to help this council finish its mandate and I'm willing to dedicate my full attention to that task. With just six months to go, there isn't time for a learning curve. You need someone with a background in municipal government that can hit the ground running and make a contribution right away. I've done this job before and I'm ready, willing, and able to do it again. I'd welcome the chance to represent the citizens of Ward three here at this council. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Robert. Questions from council? Council Kitcher?
Thank you, Mayor. The Economic Development Task Force is preparing a business case promoting the purchase and servicing of industrial land by the township. Such a venture could conceivably cost the taxpayers millions of dollars. If appointed to this council, would you favor such a proposal? Please explain why or why not.
Thank you, uh, councillor Kitcher, yes, I would support such a proposal. I've spent, uh, a good part of my career, uh, being forced to commute and leave Fergus and Alora every day. And so it's very important that we help grow our economy and that's a good way to do it. You need to have land available for industrial expansion and yes, I would support such a thing.
Council Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Robert, um, I think one of the questions earlier was to deal with the potential of commercial water taking here in Centre Wellington. Do you know enough about that issue? Do you have a view on it? Any ideas to how council should try and deal with that?
I, I drink municipal water. I, I don't buy bottled water and recently there was a program on television about how our oceans are filled with plastic, plastic bottles, uh, uh, the residue left from bottling water. So my, my view is that we should oppose it and protect our aquifer.
Council Morris?
Hi Bob, good to see you. I think the last time I saw you in this chamber, you were sitting here and I was sitting over there.
That's right.
Um, Bob, a previous question talked about a zero percent, um, operational budget increase. That's never been achieved in Centre Wellington, to my knowledge. Do you think such a goal is possible and how would you achieve it?
I do think, uh, councillor Morris, such a goal is possible. It's a difficult goal, but it is possible. And there's really only one way to achieve it and that is controlling our operating costs each, each week and each month. And that's how you, you've got to control your costs and hopefully build your revenue and, uh, invest the difference in your community. So yeah, I do think it is possible for it.
Anything else from council? Okay, thank you very much, Robert.
Thank you very much.
Next we have Alan Horns. Welcome, Alan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Linton, members of council. It's been quite a long road to get here today. I've always been interested in local politics, as many of you are aware. At the tender age of twenty-three, ran in my first campaign, in, uh, Ward four actually, against our own councillor Morris, I hope you won't hold that against me. Four years ago, of course, I ran for a county position and met the steamroller that was Rob Black. Now Senator Black, a second to Mary Lloyd at the county appointment process, and here I am today. Now, I should point out that I'm also advisor at the Echo Stone Financial Group in Ward three. Right across the street from brand-new building our councillor Morris has built, once again, I hope you won't hold that against me. As far as I'm aware, I haven't made anyone else's life more difficult on council here. In all seriousness, this is my passion, this is where I wanna be, this is what I wanna do, this is what I've worked hard for twelve years to try to accomplish. The next few months would be a great opportunity to learn from you, to ask questions, understand the issues confronting us, and where needed, make recommendations on how we might move forward. I also promise to make nice with councillor Morris. Any questions?
Any questions from members of council? Council Morris?
Well, this is my chance. I won't waste the question by asking you how you'll make my life more easier, but, um, on our agenda today, Alan, there's a topic coming up about, um, heritage properties. Do you think the township has an adequate heritage policy or does it need a more comprehensive one? If you say yes to that, could you explain why?
Certainly. I believe township's policy is adequate at this time, yes. While we all struggle with what to reserve and what to make better, we've done, or you have done lots of work in identifying heritage districts and making sure that there will always be an example of the local architecture for future generations to enjoy and to make sure that we'll have, you know, those picturesque streets to walk down for years to come.
Thanks, Alan. Anything else from council? Council Kitcher?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I would like to ask about the, uh, Nestle, the water-taking, uh, uh, situation in, uh, Centre Wellington and, um, I was wondering what your position on that is and, um, why that is.
Well, I would support council's current position. Uh, we're looking for facts, of course, to back up our opposition to Nestle's proposal. But as you mentioned earlier, we're expected to double in growth in the next twenty-five years or so. Province can't dictate that and then take away our water at the same time. So they can't have it both ways and we have to make that very clear to a province that really doesn't know that much about Centre Wellington to begin with.
Council member?
Thank you, Alan, uh, Mayor and Alan. Um, are you prepared to make council's life difficult if you disagree with what we're proposing?
I'm willing to make your life difficult, yes.
Thank you very much, Alan.
You're welcome.
Next, we have, uh, Kimberly Jean-Marie Jefferson. Jean-Marie. Sorry. Welcome, Kim.
Hey, thanks. Alright. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Linton and members of council and staff. I would like to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you about my interest in the open seat on council. My name is Kimberly Jean-Marie Jefferson and I'm a lifelong resident in Centre Wellington. I currently, currently reside in Alora and have had a small business in downtown Fergus for the past seventeen years. I also have various rental properties in Ward three. My qualification letter that was submitted with my application tells you the basics of who I am and what I've been doing in our community. I began work with our BIA by creating and running events in our downtown core. And when I stepped in as the chair recently, I began to organize committees, start up social media accounts, and instigate the revamping of our website. We are also heavily marketing Fergus in hopes to alleviate the consequences of the bridge being closed. As a community, we always want the bridges done efficiently and effectively and also keeping in mind our rural residents in the area. Their health and safety and also the well, the well-meaning of their livelihoods. There's untapped potential in Fergus and our business district is coming into its own again after the past few years of construction. With this potential, there are opportunities for the township to support initiatives and encourage economic growth in Ward three. With the private investments being made in Alora, there is the ability to leverage the opportunity to create more investment interest in Fergus. My involvement with our BIA has piqued my interest in municipal affairs and after attending the recent election information seminars, I thought I would step forward for this vacancy. With that, I would love the opportunity to serve my community in this capacity. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Council? Councillor McQueen?
Kim, do you feel that, um, economic development is, um, is pursuing the right direction right now in, within the township? Uh, and it was mentioned earlier about buying land and lowering relevant charges for industry, is that where we should be focusing all our, um, all of our resources?
I believe that's a good area to start focusing our resources. If we're going to be increasing our population as we're being predicted by the province and we're being encouraged to do like density housing and that and allowing more people into the community and to bring their families and everything, we also need something to have them be able to work. We need to bring in businesses with the industrial land so that we can have businesses and jobs and keep our dollars within our community. I also think there's, I believe it's the urban designs that has come up as well and that's something that the economic development is doing. Trying to maintain a standard across the board for new building, for old building, for new signage and things like that as well. So I think our economic development group has got a lot on their plate, but I think they're heading in the right direction.
Council Morris?
Kim, I'm curious, I heard you speak a minute ago about the leveraging off the, um, private investment in Alora and leveraging it somehow over in Fergus. Can you be more specific for me as to how you see that playing out?
Okay, um, with Alora, there's a lot of money coming in that's private money, that's going towards the mill and generating people to come and the tourism and everything as well. Uh, Fergus, I think, has a lot of potential with revitalization of our downtown core and then also filling some of our vacant stores and things that are kinda left to go. Um, with the money that's coming to Alora, the township should be investing so that the people that are coming to experience Alora will maybe wanna come and experience in Fergus. And that there is a lot of potential, there's like heritage buildings to see, there's a lot of Scottish architecture in there. And that would be a good basis for the tourism, but now we're putting on other events to keep the people in our area. Um, yeah, so all of the the businesses need the help and need the beautification and the revitalization to make Fergus a place that you wanna visit.
Thanks, Kim. Council Kitcher?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thanks for putting your name forward.
Thank you.
You're a businesswoman and you've been in business for seventeen years in, in Fergus and, um, what do you see the cultural, uh, development in Centre Wellington? Like with the aspects, what, what do you see the potential for that as an economic driver?
The cultural development like in Centre Wellington as a whole or the cultural development just Fergus-specific?
For the community as a whole, including Fergus.
Okay. Um, well, Fergus has a lot of culture, a little bit more Scottish where Alora tends to have a little bit more of the arts and music. Um, it would be good to combine the two and I think we've been moving forward by doing a lot of promotion with the different events and festivals that we have in the area. Um, culture and heritage is always a good attraction for tourism, which is something that we're always wanting to pull into our area. Um, but yeah, moving forward, more events, more festivals, I think pushing our arts community. Helping where we can with funding and grants.
Thanks, Kim.
Good, thanks. Thank you so much.
Sorry, anybody else? Sorry, I didn't wanna cut off the question, anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, staff, members of council.
Next person we have is Vince Main. Welcome, Vince.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councillors. It's a pleasure to speak to you today. Uh, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a business professional with over, can you hear me okay? Is that okay? I'm a business professional with over forty years' experience with, uh, Fortune five hundred companies, mostly in the banking and the information technology areas. I now split my time between, uh, major fundraising events with the Canadian Cancer Society and volunteer roles with the Chartered Professional Accountants Association of Canada. There's three topics I wanna share with you today. Things that I think need to be focused on and certainly, uh, part of the next six-month mandate as a potential, uh, member of council. But first of all, uh, I moved to Alora here about a year and a half ago. So I'm new here, I'm different than many of the people who are appearing before you today with a wealth of committee experience and knowledge of the, uh, goings-on of the county. Uh, I think I can ramp up pretty quick and, uh, understand what's going on, uh, in the township and some of the priorities and um, challenges facing us, uh, very quickly. But when, I tell people in Toronto, where I moved from, that, uh, Alora's a great place to visit and a great culture and, uh, lots of art festivals, uh, they all say, "Well, the Alora Mill is closed, so there's really no reason to come here." And I can't see that commits them to come back, which brings me to my first point. I think we've really gotta boost tourism. And I think we can leverage that through many of the existing festivals and activities that are underway, uh, in the summertime and attract tourists and ramp up the quantity and the quality of tourists and their willingness to spend money in the community over the course of the year. And I think when the mill reopens this spring, I think we've gotta be lockstep with every activities that they have underway and leverage those initiatives. And I think that's an easy way to do it. It's low-cost. Uh, it also builds on an important industry for the community and I think we all talk about building on the industrial base and, uh, we know that the investment in industrial lands and attracting, uh, industries through, uh, fairly significant tax concessions competing with, uh, some of the municipalities that already have a pretty active, uh, economic development portfolio and capability. Uh, as newcomers, I think the ramp up in the cost is gonna be relatively significant. And, uh, if we focus on tourism in the short term, I think we could achieve a lot of the, uh, associated benefits quickly. And on top of that, if we focus on tourism, we can maintain some of the local charm and character that we know and, uh, embrace here in the community of Alora and Fergus. Lastly, many of you councillors all talked about building on the industrial base in the twenty-fourteen election. I think this is an industry that we can build quickly and with a low-cost investment. The second area you wanna focus on is, uh, transportation master study. And I've, uh, spoke to the subject matter experts at various open houses and more frequently the one at Fergus. And, uh, I'm impressed by the amount of activity that's going on to, uh, widen roads, build bridges and even provide a cycle path along South River Road. But I didn't see anything that's for, for our senior citizens. There's no specific initiatives aimed at our senior citizens in helping them get around. in helping them get around the community. And I think there's a need to focus on our seniors because they make up twenty percent of the population. And that's three percent higher than anywhere else in Canada for that age group of people. And this group of people, as an age group, grew one percent faster in the Wellington County area in the last census. So it's a significant component of our population. It's one where the time is not kind to, we're all going to end up there sooner or later. And I think, I just recently joined the ranks myself. But I think we need to focus on seniors in that transportation study and make sure that there's no gaps in there and they can get around the community as easily as the rest of us can. The third item I want to focus on today is the constituents. Since the council seat or the, excuse me, the township seat has been vacant for about a month, I'm sure there's a stack of open issues that need to be attended to. I'll take on those issues, resolve them, and deal with as many of the constituents as quickly as possible. And I'm done. Thank you. Questions?
Thanks, Vince. Any questions from council?
I'll be just as quiet if there's no questions.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Vince, I'm just going to ask the same question that was previously asked before. How do you envision leveraging the Alora tourism towards the Fergus area, which is a constituency that you'd be representing?
I think the easiest way to do it is leverage the existing initiatives that are in place and support the organizers of those events in the ways possible and, you know, maybe expand the reach of their initiatives out to other parts of Ontario and attract the tourism and perhaps even retarget some of the initiatives that are underway to see if we can, if there's untouched areas of the population that, you know, for example, don't know about Riverfest as one of the activities that go on.
Counselor Kitchess?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask this question again. Centre Wellington has never had zero percent operational budget increase. Do you think such a goal is possible? And how do you think it could best be achieved?
So let me answer the question this way. When I was part of an organization, we undertook a zero-based budget activity. It was a long ramp-up activity. We went through a number of steps to make sure that we identified the resources and the inputs critical to achieving the goal of understanding all the components. Thirdly, we also identified what we needed in terms of change agents in the organization to discuss and help staff and other budget owners through the process. But in the end of the day, I think we uncovered a number of areas that we weren't willing as an organization to fund any longer and areas that did not actually achieve the overall corporate goal. So I think it's quite achievable. It takes a bit of energy, it takes a lot of focus, and it's certainly one I'd be willing to participate in.
Counselor Morris?
I'm going to tap into your business experience here if I could for a minute. How important do you feel a process review is to any organization?
It depends on the nature of the process. If you're looking at, you know, processes to deal with just the ongoing activities in the organization such as responding to constituents' complaints or questions for information, I think that that's an important one. But so anything that touches the constituents and has frontline impact in terms of raising the value of the township to the constituents, I think it's a worthwhile activity. Some of the back office processes, I think I would look at those in the context of streamlining them and finding organizations that are capable of doing them in a very streamlined manner. So that would be my, how I would categorize it. And then I think in the area in between, there's a huge spectrum of activities that you could undertake in process reviews and determine if they could streamline them. Does that answer your question? We could go on for hours on that one.
One question. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Vince. Okay. The next person that we have is Angela Marie. Welcome, Angela.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council and staff. While I acknowledge my fellow candidate's expansive knowledge and expertise, I believe it is my extensive experience in governance and this related skill set that make me the ideal candidate for this position. I'd like to draw attention to my professional life, my current professional life too. To begin with, I'm a professor teaching at Guelph-Humber University, WLU and also the University of Windsor. I teach social work, so I teach governance, I teach agency administration. I will bring all of this to the table. Secondly is my private practice. I'm a therapist and have had a successful practice now for ten years. I see individuals, families and couples, but I specialize in providing mediation and arbitration services to high-conflict couples post-divorce. Here I have learned how to manage conflict, taking two opposing sides and two positions and bringing them closer together to a common interest. I will bring these negotiation skills to the table. Bringing the needs of my constituents to the table in a professional and helpful manner will be second nature to me. Thirdly, my professional life has been one of community development. For over thirty years, closer to forty now, I've been working with communities, whether they are ones of geography, attribute or interest, trying to improve the lives of people within those communities. Starting at sixteen, when on student council, I was in charge of charities. Moving on to university, when I started an Amnesty International group, which was the most active one in Canada. On into my early twenties, when I was an executive director of a small agency working with street youth. Into my thirties, when I managed a counseling agency and a violence prevention program where we created legal support programs. Then into my forties, where again I was an executive director, creating, following budgets, ensuring adherence to laws and policies and working with the board. Now into my fifties, I see that working within government is a natural expansion and progression of a life of service. As a community developer, I've worked with all levels of government to meet the needs of a community. I've created policies, led committees, sat on committees, and have been at heart of many of those committees. I'm a person who collaborates, but I'm also a very strong advocate. I research a position and present it based upon facts and principles and stand firm when necessary and good for the constituents of my community. Someone to may point to the fact that my professional life has been outside of CW and that my experience is not here. But given the nature of the work I do and the lack of social services in our community, which is something I would like to change, I haven't had much choice. My commitment to this community can be seen in the volunteer work I do in my free time over the twenty years that I've lived here. Starting in my children's school, being part of and helping to administer all types of fundraising events, to managing backstage at school dance recitals, volunteering at Tutu and U, Art in the Yard, cleanups of the river, to my most recent experience, five years on the board at Big Brothers Big Sisters. I'm just as happy to lead a strategic planning session as I am to go out and pick up garbage. Being an active citizen is not about what I can get, it's not about what my rights are, but it's about what I can offer my community, about my responsibilities to that community. That is something I live each day, and I also like to think that I've taught my children that as well. Centre Wellington is on the cusp of significant growth and is encouraged by the growth plan. We'll need to manage this growth to ensure that all have their needs met, whether it's a need for social services, gainful employment, green space, stores, galleries, recreation. I see there is a need to balance the needs of those that live in CW and those that visit, balance our need to grow an industry with our environmental needs, our need to expand residential spaces with our need to protect heritage buildings, and all of it requires a regard for the underlying infrastructure there. I think I am the candidate that has the skills needed to work with fellow councilors to ensure this balance in growth of Centre Wellington. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Angela. Counselor? Counselor McQueen?
Thanks, Kelly. You mentioned that you had spent some time with street youth organization in the past. Do you have some thoughts on what we could be doing better here in Centre Wellington to protect our youth from drug problems, getting them off the street, keeping them more active?
Yes, absolutely. This is clearly an area that's close to my heart. In working with Big Brothers Big Sisters, we're actually looking at, I'm hoping I'm not talking out of turn here for them, looking at a youth hub with regards to meeting the needs of the youth. So we don't want our youth on the street. Within two weeks of being on the street, somebody gets absorbed by it. And I do know that the fentanyl is moving into our community as is an overuse of Xanax for high school students. We don't have services here in town to meet the needs of our youth, and where are we going to bring them? You can't bring them into Guelph. There is no housing for homeless youth in our community as it is. They have to go to Guelph. And that takes them away from their connections and their community, which is key to helping them succeed and get back into what we would call a more typical life. So yes, I do have lots of ideas for that.
Counselor Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Angela, you mentioned a couple of things that I thought were very interesting. One is the focus on conflict resolution in your career, and the other is the situation we find ourselves here in regards to growth, significant growth that's coming our way. And it's no secret we're being under a lot of pressure to grow rapidly, we're under a lot of pressure to increase density significantly here, and that of course means different forms, different types of housing and structures that is kind of perceived to be at odds with some of the traditional single-family forms that we have here now. At the same time, we have a community that expresses a strong interest in preserving its small-town feel. To me, that sounds like a bit of a conflict, and I wonder if A, you see it that way, and B, what you would do as a member of council to try and maybe balance or address that situation?
Well, in strictest terms, yes, it would be a conflict because conflict is any two opposing ideas coming together. And I view, quite frankly, without conflict, there is no growth. So yes, but no. I don't think it necessarily has to be a negative. I think that the sense of community and belonging that needs to be created first before we even start looking at the different types of housing is how do we create that sense of belonging so that somebody that does have, maybe is, has less income, feels as much a part of the community as somebody that has a lot of income. We're blessed in this community, that we have, our median income is higher than most of Ontario. So we are blessed, but we do have some poverty here. And we need to be addressing those needs of that community as well. I don't think we are, but I do think there's significant things we can do, starting in smaller pockets, to increase that sense of community.
Counselor Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Angela, Centre Wellington appears to have a very robust Parks and Recreation Department and Cultural Affairs. In your opinion, have you thought about whether there's any room for improvement in the things that we're already doing? And if you have, what are those things that you see that we should do differently?
With regards to cultural affairs, I think we're doing quite well. Coming from a country, from Scotland, where most of the economy there is based upon tourism now, I fear the idea of having so much economy based upon tourism. That's a natural fear that I have. So I would also be thinking about culturally, yes, we absolutely have to do that, but we have to offset it with other economic development at the same time. And then going back to recreation, do I think we're not doing well? I think that there's quite a few people that can't partake in recreation because they can't afford it. So I think we need to be looking at ways to ensure that everybody gets the opportunity to do some form of sports, some leisure activities, absolutely. I would like to see some transportation from Alora and perhaps from Inverhaugh, Ponsenby as well, to get people to Fergus where the recreation, where the pool is, for instance. So I think we need to do things like that to pull people together more.
Counselor Kitchess?
Thank you, Mayor. As a resident of here for twenty years, and you'd mentioned strategic planning, the township has a strategic plan with five goals: reliable infrastructure, healthy growth, economic prosperity, pride of place, and good governance. Now you only have one minute. So in your opinion, how should council use this tool to maximum benefit?
Oh gee, in one minute? Well, I think that we do need to go back to it. I think it's something we always need to go back to, the vision, the mission statement, are we doing it? Review it, and then, and where we're not making it, we need to actually look at it right away and figure out what are we not doing enough of and change it immediately. I'm not one for having a strategic plan and then letting it sit there and then we don't follow it. You need to go back to it constantly. You were talking about process review. I love logic models. I do them for fun. That's what I do in my free time. And so I would be building in evaluation to just about everything that's done. It does not need to be arduous, it does not need to be difficult. You put it in, it's there and it's part of the process, and you see and you tweak and you change all along the process. So I think we constantly need to go back to that strategic plan and ensure we're doing it.
Thank you very much, Angela.
Thank you.
Next person that we have here is Scott Preston. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today about why I would like you to consider me for the position of Counselor, Ward Three. I've lived and worked in the township of Centre Wellington for twenty-four years. While I currently reside in Ward Two, my family and I lived on Side Road Eighteen in Ward Three for ten years from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and four. I graduated from Ontario Agricultural College in nineteen eighty with a diploma in agriculture and from the University of Guelph with a Bachelor of Arts in nineteen ninety, Master's Degree in nineteen ninety-one, followed by Bachelor of Education in nineteen ninety-two. From nineteen ninety-two to ninety-four, I was co-chair of the Halton Peel Agricultural Education Committee, a group representing farmers, agribusiness and educators in Halton and Peel Counties. I've been employed as a teacher for twenty-seven years and for the last seventeen of those years as a vice-principal and a principal with the Upper Grand District School Board. During this time, I was vice-principal of Alora Public School for two years and I'm currently principal of John Black Public School and have been since two thousand and thirteen. How am I going to have time for this? Well, I am due to retire from this position on June thirtieth of this year, and I believe, strongly believe, that the skills I have developed in this role make me an ideal representative of the people of our community. It's enabled me to develop the necessary people skills and depth of understanding of our community and our diverse population that few other careers could offer. During my last five years as principal of John Black, I've been very involved with the families of our community. The John Black catchment area includes much of Ward Three. All students in Fergus north of the Grand River, including the downtown, attend John Black. The James McQueen students come to John Black for grades four to eight and the Victoria Terrace students attend for grade seven and eight. So being principal of John Black has enabled me to work very closely with families in our community. For some of us, at my vintage, when the principal of somebody in the office who you never saw unless maybe you were in trouble, those days are long gone. I am very, very involved with the families in my community. Being chosen as Counselor for Ward Three would enable me to continue my service to the Centre Wellington community, something that is very important to me. I'd like to touch now on economic development, an area which, of course, I believe in and I think most believe is very important to our community. The combination of reduced development charges, support for entrepreneurs and small business, and downtown revitalization are all helping us move towards a stronger, sustainable local economy. And when we talk about downtown revitalization, I think we can be proud of the work that has been and continues to be done in both our downtowns. Of course, the Alora Mill project and the incredible changes taking place in downtown Alora are very high-profile. Of course, the Alora Mill Project and the incredible changes taking place in downtown Alora are are very high-profile. But let's not lose sight of the important work being done in downtown Fergus as well. The library, the new Saint David Street Bridge, the storefront rejuvenation pro- program. The wonderfully restored building at the corner of Saint Andrew and Saint David, now home to the Vault and Red Brick Real Estate Office, are changing the face of downtown Alora. And when we talk about supporting economic development, we need to remember the importance of continuing to create, and this has come up a couple of times, so now you know my views, more municipally fully serviced industrial lots and continue to improve our transportation infrastructure. Now, there's a lot of focus on ec- on economic development in urban areas of our township, and rightfully so. But when considering economic development, it's also important to recognize the role agriculture plays in our local economy. I mentioned before that I'm a graduate of the Ontario Agricultural College, and in the early nineties, I chaired the Halton Peel Agricultural Education Committee. Our purpose was to educate the urban public on the importance of agriculture in our community and in our economy. And that is something I would want to continue to do. A large part of this ward and a large part of our township is rural. It's not just the downtowns. Our economic development task force has pointed out, a strong agricultural sector, both family farms and agribusiness, is important for our local economy. And it offers both local and global opportunities. In summary, I'm confident I possess the qualifications necessary to represent the residents of Ward Three and our township. My education and experience, my roles as teacher and school administrator in both urban and rural environments, have enabled me to develop the excellent interpersonal communication, problem-solving, and conflict resolution skills essential to the position of township councillor. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you Scott. Council? Council Ketchus?
Um, thank you Mayor. Um, I'm gonna ask again, with the possibility of commercial water-taking operations coming to Centre Wellington lying on the future horizon, what do you think is the appropriate position for council to take on that matter?
Okay, I think that's a, that's a valid question. It's also, it's it's a difficult one as well. Uh, my personal feelings uh are I don't see a lot of benefit for this to our community. I don't see a lot of jobs coming. And I'm very concerned about our water resources. Having lived on Sidewood Eighteen where we were on a well, um, we and we were on a shallow dug well at that time. Um, water is so important to uh to our community. This is taking out a huge amount of water, I mean unprecedented amount of water. I've seen the science that's been put forward that it's not gonna have impact. I'm not so sure. I believe, as in most uh industrial development operations, I think we need to look at, well, what's the benefit to the township? What's this bringing to the township that might override the concerns of the community? But right now, without question, I feel the community is feeling that this is not a direction we wanna go into. And I haven't seen the information that suggests to me that yes, this is gonna be good for the township. Before voting on this, I would wanna have all the information available.
Council from council? Council Morse?
I'm sure as a teacher, you know what that bell means.
Yeah, I thought it meant I had to go.
Let's talk about growth for a minute. Um, we are growing rapidly. And we will continue to grow rapidly for the next twenty-five years. What what do you see is the biggest challenge that that's gonna cause here in Centre Wellington?
I think the biggest challenge it's gonna cause is uh support services, you know, services to support that growth. Now, there is development money that would be coming in. I think the other big challenge is we are moving from a small-town environment, both Fergus and Alora, small-town and village environment, and having lived in both, they're they have their own distinctive view of themselves or ourselves in those communities. We're moving to that to a to a larger, uh, a much larger community with a lot of people coming from away. I came here from away uh twenty, twenty-four years ago. And had had great neighbors and uh we became very, very good friends over the years. But it was it was difficult to get past the fact that you didn't go to high school in Fergus. You you're not really one of us. And we did get past all that, but that's the reality of small towns. So a big issue is going to be helping the whole community recognize that this is good for all of us. It's not just good for the township, it's the right thing to do. And and on top of that, we need to have a nice diverse uh selection of housing.
Any other counsel?
Affordable housing. It's not gonna be an expensive community.
Okay, thank you very much Scott.
Did I lose marks for carrying on?
Yeah, we've 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 talked.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Next we have Deborah Taylor. Welcome Deb.
Good afternoon. Okay, I'm just gonna start. Okay, good afternoon, Mister Mayor and Centre Wellington Council. My name is Deb Taylor, and if you don't know me, I spend a lot of time on social media. A lot of my opinions can be found on social media, which I find is a very significant part of our community. There's a lot of different groups and things, and I think sometimes there's their opinions and things get missed along the line because maybe they're not so vocal when it comes to being out in public. I've uh done a lot of self-directed research in the last four years since this council has come into water issues and transportation. I was part of the Centre Wellington Social Justice Group. And when that was brought forward to us, we had three things that we wanted to do as that group. And one of them was looking at housing, looking at transportation, and looking at good food ideas and local food ideas into our community. Um, Centre Wellington as a community is growing, and as it continues to grow, we're gonna need money for infrastructure, money for infrastructure. Sorry. Centre Wellington is a growing community, and many of the choices that we make in our community don't come from us, does not come from our town council. It comes from the county or it comes from the per- province. And that's where the majority of our money also comes from. We don't have a lot to put into what we have. So we really don't have a say on what goes where. So I'm looking at, you know, Ward Three is part township and part county. So how do you find the common ground there for what you want as part of the county and what you want as part of the township? Is something that I would be interested in in learning about. As Centre Wellington continues to grow, our community needs change, and with this change must come an understanding that more money must be spent on that infrastructure. And the infrastructure does not come cheap. And having a a small urban center just with over just thirty thousand people and expecting to double is going to cost that money. I know right now that I am not applying to, I'm applying to fill a vacancy, but I feel that I'm very apprised to what's going on. I've been following the water issue from the beginning. I'm still following the water issue and what the province is doing. Um, I read all the reports that come out through the province on our drinking water. I read the reports that come out through our township on the drinking water. In the master plan, all the wells in Alora seem perfectly fine. Fergus has some water issues. Each well seems to have a different issue. And I noticed in one of those wells, the T E C levels are up or have had T C E problems. And that's one of the things that the um province has looked at, changing the amounts allowed into that water system. So to me, the drinking water, it's about what comes out of our tap and the chemicals that are in that. And how Nestle or any other water bottling company is actually, they don't follow the same rules. Even though they say they follow the stringent rule, they don't because you have to do all that testing. And they test it at the source, yet they don't have to do any of that reporting to the government. Where we report everything that happens to our water to the government. So it makes you question on what we're actually putting into that bottle of water and what does actually make it different than what's coming out of our tap.
Thank you very much Deb. Uh, council? Okay, thank you very much. Next we have uh Walt Visser. Welcome Walt.
Thank you. It's a little different standing on this side of the worship. Mister Mayor, members of council, staff. Aside from my contributions on councils, which I gave to you in my presentation, I have contributed to this municipality for as a volunteer for thirty-five years. I started volunteering on the Fergus Recreation Committee for eight years. And I'm not a joiner, but a worker. Therefore, I chaired the Fergus United Way, Credit and Debt Counseling, the Fergus Law Rotary Club, Centre Wellington Advisory Group for Seniors and Children. I'm a founding member of the Queen Street Medical Offices and also a past chairman. Also a founding member of the Accessibility Committees for Groves Hospital, the Province of Ontario, and the County of Wellington. And I still sit on that committee today. I'm also a founding member of the Doctor Recruitment Committee. Uh, Dr. English and I started that in the year two thousand uh when Groves wasn't even looking for doctors. And I think with the expanding community, both the hospital and the Doctor Recruitment Committee are vital with 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 just the people that are flooding into town. I'm currently the president of the Centre Wellington Probes Club. I also personally ensured that all doctors' offices and sports venues in Centre Wellington were equipped with defibrillators, either with some fund money or by sponsors. I have touched almost every aspect of life uh for the town of Fergus and Centre Wellington to the centre to the amalgamation of Centre Wellington. For thirty-five years, oh, I'm sorry, interruption here. Um, I chaired as councillor, I chaired Finance Committee, Public Works, Recreation, Fire, Police, and Operations. So I do have some experience. Uh, for thirty-five years, all my discussions and decisions were for the good of the community. And I would like to continue this work for Centre Wellington. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much Walt. Uh, council? Council Morse?
Walt, I just have to ask you this question because we've sat on many budget committee meetings, uh, you and I, but in recent times, the idea has floated been floated that um why not have a zero percent operational budget increase? There's never been one, as you know, since amalgamation. Do you think such a goal is possible now? Um, and if so, why?
When I was chair of Finance Committee, I aimed for that goal, and we didn't make it. Um, I I think it's a worthy goal to aim for, but it would take the whole council, not three or four members. It would take the whole council and all the staff to that kind of a commitment. Because everybody has their little niche, their little, what do you call it, kingdom, empire? And they have to protect that. And that attitude has to change where you have to say, how can we streamline this? How can we do this better? And in industry, you do that or you or you don't survive. So I I think it's a very worthwhile goal. I ran in the last election, but I was defeated by a better man.
Any else from council? Okay, thank you very much Walt.
Thank you.
Last person that we have here, her number thirteen, is Dean Workman. Welcome Dean.
Okay, Mister Mayor, councillors and staff, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. Many, many of you know me and have a pretty good idea of my character. I ran at the last election for Ward One and was beaten by Don. Good on you, mate. And I only ran because there was a vacancy and because I had a connection with Ward One because my locksmith business is across the road on Getty Street. I chose not to run in Ward Three because I'd met Mary and her husband, and I personally quite liked them. I actually live in Ward Three and our farm is on the Beady Line where I grow hops. Uh, I'm a board member of the Ontario Hop growers Association, which is kind of fun. How did I get here? I'm often asked this. I actually met my wife while backpacking in Turkey in nineteen ninety-one. It's a long story. But uh she's of Dutch descent and her family are farmers who settled in this area in the nineteen fifties. We have three children, two still at home, and my eldest is at uh McMaster University. So uh why Ward Three and why now? It's primarily because I live here. I live in Ward Three, and I believe the person who uh has a business or lives in Ward Three should be the one to represent the people there. Otherwise, why would we have a ward system in the first place? Uh, strangely enough, my father was a councillor on the Gold Coast City Council where I grew up, and his ward was Ward Three, which is kinda cool. So what do I bring to the table? Well, I've done lots of things in my life and it's been quite an exciting adventure. Uh, I have many facets of uh my experiences. Uh, one constant is that I'm always, I've always been a musician. So I have a strong appreciation for the arts. Uh, many people don't know this, but many years ago, I was a actually a youth pastor of a Christian church. I completed five years of part-time Bible college and have my diploma in Christian ministry. Perhaps it may be irrelevant today, but I believe it means that I developed a good social conscience as a youth minister and a handle on conflict resolution. And perhaps it highlights my ability to uh empathize with people in various situations and issues that they're dealing with. I worked three years as a, in an accounting office while I was studying my undergraduate degree, which I did not finish. A couple of things happened in my life which actually knocked me out of the uh, out of that arena. I also spent a in uh an intense period of my life investing in real estate. I've only completed thirteen property renovations, but it did give me a pretty good handle on the process, especially when it came to coordinating many facets and phases of construction and finance. Uh, and for a time, I was working on a developing a subdivision that uh that the market changed and I was knocked out of the arena on that. So, my goal is uh not to come into council with guns blazing and trying to fix things. Uh, my goal is to be uh to work as a team player with the council members to help keep Centre Wellington the desirable place it is to live. Uh, and basically, I just really wanna continue to add value to the community. I do volunteer on a few things, but uh I'm a very busy guy, so I can't do everything. But uh, I really think I can do a good thing on council here if given the opportunity. So, thank you.
Thanks Dean. Council? Council McQueen?
Thanks Kelly. Um, Dean, you mentioned the fact you're a musician and involved with the arts. Do you feel that um the township invests in the arts um enough, I guess, at Centre Wellington to uh to ensure that our arts community continues to grow and thrive the way they should?
Well, we have an amazing community of artists and musicians here. It's it's quite unique. I mean, I've traveled a lot of places and to have this many people concentrated in those fields is is quite unbelievable. So uh, how much money's enough? That's kind of the thing. Like, we have a, like, most people are very aware of the arts in this community, and I and I think we do support it quite strongly. I mean, I couldn't imagine trying to get a permit to put Riverfest in another community. It would be a nightmare. But here, we support it. So I think I think we're doing a pretty good job. That obviously, there's more you can do, but I think it's it's we're on the right track.
Council Ketchus?
Thank you Mayor. I'm gonna reiterate this question. Um, with the possibility of commercial water-taking operation coming to Centre Wellington that lies on the future horizon, what do you think is an appropriate position for council to take on that matter?
For me, I've seen the blue ribbons everywhere. And I really think if the community's spoken fairly strongly on this, and as the representatives of the community, and there's plenty of people, I haven't done a great deal of homework in it. I don't know all the answers on this, but the community's spoken as far as I'm concerned. Particularly if we're looking at a twenty, uh doubling our growth in twenty-five years, the amount of water we're gonna need is, we can't even measure that at this point in time, what we're gonna need. So, do we So do we take advantage of this opportunity now and shoot ourselves in the foot and have to buy water down the track? It's a tough question, but we also have to look at what value these guys are going to bring to the community. And so far, I haven't seen that they're going to be bringing a lot of benefit to us as a community. And actually, at the end of the day, it is about us as a community. I mean, it might sound selfish, but this is our backyard. So, hope I've answered that for you.
Council Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dean, in your opinion, what is effective citizen engagement?
Effective citizen engagement? Well, being aware of what's going on and being allowed to speak at events and table ideas that won't be pigeonholed into something that's not touchable, that'll actually be opened for discussion. Does that answer the question fairly well? Yep?
Any else for council? Great, thank you very much Dean.
Thank you. You guys got a tough job ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to talk a little bit about that. Honestly, I'm very overwhelmed by the quality of the candidates we have today. It's a good thing we're only asking for a one position because some of us might be out of work. And, and I want to say, you know, even though we're, we're picking, we have to pick one individual here and this is a very difficult process, and I'm glad I'm not chairing that process because I'm handing things over to our clerk. But I do encourage everybody that came out today, we have other opportunities. There's only going to be one person successful, but we have other opportunities to be involved in Centre Wellington. And I really do mean this when I say, please get involved with us because we need your skills, we need your expertise, we need your passion for this community. And we need to partner with people like you. So thank you very much for putting your name forward and I want to work with each one of you in the future. So that being said, I do have a recommendation here that the Council of Township of Centre Wellington receives a certified list of eligible candidates as presented by the manager of Legislative Clerk Services as Oh, sorry. Well, I didn't do anything wrong, yeah, did I? Oh yeah, I did, okay. That the council, I have a recommendation that the Council of Township of Centre Wellington amends the list of certified eligible candidates to remove Rick Beasley from consideration and therefore receives the amendment. Certified list of eligible candidates as follows. Kathy Baransky, Megan Burke, Dennis Craddock, Thomas Fay, Robert Foster, Alan Hons, Kimberley, Jean Marie Jefferson, Vince P. Main, Angela Murray, Scott Preston, Deborah Taylor, Walt Visser and Dean Workman. Can I move her for that recommendation, please? Council Kittriss, seconded by Council Fisher, all in favour? And that is carried. Okay, so we have our list now. So now I am going to pass the chair over to our clerk and I'm going to move.
Sorry, I pulled the Kelly there. Council has now confirmed, now confirmed the final list of eligible candidates under consideration to fill the vacancy, the vacant position for Council Ward Three. I'll ask Lisa to display the list of candidates, please. The voting process we will use today to determine the appointment has been outlined in the council vacancy policy adopted by council on March the twenty-sixth. Council will participate in a public vote by ballot. The first candidate to receive more than fifty percent of the available votes will fill the vacancy. That means the successful candidate needs at least four votes. Assisting me this afternoon in the voting process is Deputy Clerk Lisa Miller and Cemetery and Licensing Coordinator Constance Redman. I will outline the information that's to be completed on the ballots, a quick review of the voting process, and then I will give members of council an opportunity to ask any final questions before the voting begins. Each member of council will receive one ballot at a time for each round of voting. That ballot is pre-printed with the following. The number of the round of voting, the council member's name, a blank space for the member of council to print the first and last name of the candidate they wish to vote for, and a blank space for the member of council to sign their ballot. Signatures do not have to be legible. Ballots that do not contain both the first name of the candidate and the last name or the signature of the member of council will be rejected. When round one of the voting begins, each member of council will mark their ballot, fold it in half and place it at the front of their desk to be collected. Once it has been collected, it cannot be changed. Print the candidate's name legibly, because if I cannot read it, the ballot will be rejected. And Lisa has the ballot sheet or the tally sheet presented. The round one tally sheet is shown on the screen and all candidates' names included. For round one, council will vote and I will read the contents of each ballot aloud. Both the name of the candidate that received the vote and the name of the council member who cast that vote. As each name is read, Lisa will record the results on the spreadsheet. If a candidate gets at least four votes in one round, the voting stops. The name of the successful applicant is announced and Mayor Linton will resume his place of Chair of this meeting. If in round one, no candidate receives four or more votes, we move on to round two. Before voting starts in round two, Constance will distribute the ballots for the next round of voting and Lisa will amend the tally sheet to remove the names of any candidates that did not receive at least one vote in round one. And she will remove the name of, pardon me, remove the name of the candidate who received the lowest number of votes in round one. For example, one candidate receives three votes, one candidate receives two votes, one candidate receives one vote, the name of the candidate with one vote is removed from consideration. If in round one, there is a tie among the candidates for the lowest votes, the names of the tied candidates are placed in a bag and the names of all but one are drawn to continue into round two. The name not drawn is excluded from the next round of voting. Example, six candidates each get one vote. Those not receiving any votes are automatically eliminated and all six names go into the bag. Five names are drawn to continue to the next round. The name not drawn is eliminated. We continue the process of elimination until we have one candidate with four votes. That concludes my explanation of the voting process. Are there any questions? Okay. Constance, will you please distribute the ballots for round one? Council Fisher casts a vote for Angela Murray. Council Morris casts a vote for Dean Workman. Council Kittriss casts a vote for Dean Workman. Council Van Lewen casts a vote for Megan Burke. Mayor Linton casts a vote for Kimberley Jefferson. And Council McEwan casts a vote for Angela Murray. We'll just take a minute to tally that. Okay, no candidate has received at least four votes and we will continue to round two. Constance, could you please distribute? Hang on a second. We have a tie, yes. There's your bag. Constance, could you please put the name of Kimberley and Megan in the bag? Take it a good shake. Megan Burke continues to round two. Council Fisher casts a vote for Angela Murray. Council Morris casts a vote for Dean Workman. Council Kittriss casts a vote for Dean Workman. Council Van Lewen casts a vote for Megan Burke. Mayor Linton casts a vote for Megan Burke. And Council McEwan casts a vote for Dean Workman. Yep, so no candidate has received at least four votes. We will continue on to round three. Lisa's updating the list of candidates and Angela Murray has been, Murray has been eliminated. You don't get a question. Go ahead, yep, round three. Council Fisher casts a vote for Dean Workman. Council Morris casts a vote for Dean Workman. Council Kittriss casts a vote for Dean Workman. Council Van Lewen casts a vote for Megan Burke. Mayor Linton casts a vote for Megan Burke. And Council McEwan casts a vote for Dean Workman. We now have a candidate with four votes. Through the council voting process, council has selected Dean Workman as the applicant to be appointed to the Office of Ward Three Councillor. This concludes the process and Mayor Linton, you may now resume your seat.
Thank you very much, candidates who came out and it was an interesting process for sure and thanks and I really mean that. Please feel free to contact us, the ones that aren't the successful candidate. Please feel free to contact the township. We'd love to make sure that we use your, use your expertise and your passion for this community. So please give us a call. And congratulations Dean. And I have a recommendation here that the Council of Township of Centre Wellington appoints Dean Workman to fill the office of Council Ward Three for the remainder of the current term of council. Moved by? Council McEwan, seconded by Council Kittriss, all in favour? And that is carried. Yeah, so what we'll do, you want, I can, I can mention, right? We'll be doing the swearing-in, doing the pictures and all, you have to get all new fresh pictures. So come in your Sunday best and that's when Dean will be sworn in as the member for Ward Three. Okay, so next, the next Monday at council meeting. And now we are going to take a brief recess. Feel free to stay for the rest of council if you'd like to. We have some interesting things on the agenda. But we'll take a brief recess and we'll come back to the table at four o'clock, okay? Thank you again, everybody, for participating in this process. Okay, thank you again everybody for participating in this process. Okay, we'll reconvene, well, we'll reconvene, we'll restart up the meeting here. And we're on section twelve, uh, presentations announcements. And we have, uh, update on our long-term water supply master plan. And we have, you're gonna start off, okay, Colin, starting off?
Uh, yes, thank you Mayor Linton, I'll just, uh, call up Patty Quackenbush, uh, from AECOM. So, uh, if council will recall, um, we were awarded, uh, the contract for the water supply master plan, uh, a few months ago. And, um, and so we've had, uh, been busy, uh, doing a lot of data analysis and, uh, crunching some numbers. Uh, we also had the first, uh, public information center, um, along with, at the, uh, the key projects, uh, open house back on April fourth. So, uh, so we had some presentation there and, uh, we'd like to, uh, take this opportunity today to, uh, to provide just, uh, kind of a brief overview presentation. Uh, essentially kicking off the water supply master plan, so with that, I'll hand it over to Patty.
Thank you Colin and, uh, thank you for inviting me here. Uh, on April fourth, the township held its first public information center to introduce the commencement of the water supply master plan. At the PIC, a series of ten information boards was presented to provide an overview of the project. And the content of these boards has been broken up into this presentation, so the text is a bit more legible, so it's a little bit longer than ten pages. There are approximately one hundred and fifty, sorry, I need to move forward, this one? There were approximately a hundred and fifty visitors to the township's open house on a snowy evening. And quite a few seemed interested in the water supply master plan study. We walked the attendees through the boards which explain the current water supply system, why a water supply master plan is needed, the proposed steps to undertake the study and how the community can be involved. The water supply master plan is being completed through the municipal class EA process, which includes many opportunities for public and agency comment. Nope, I think I jumped ahead here, that's okay, we'll keep going. Uh, this first PIC was held at the outset of the study and the second PIC will be held in phase two of the EA process to involve agencies and the public in the evaluation of water supply alternatives to select a preferred solution. PIC attendees were encouraged to ask questions and leave comments at the PIC or after the event. The third PIC board provided an overview of the tasks involved in the master plan study, commencing with population and demand projections, estimating the capacity of the existing township wells under normal and extreme operating scenarios, and then calculating the additional water supply capacity needed to satisfy the future demand. These tasks are currently underway. The following tasks will include identification of a number of alternatives to meet the future supply requirements, including water conservation, optimization of existing wells, additional groundwater wells and surface water sources. These will each be evaluated against criteria to assess the impact to the natural, social and cultural environments. The final outcome of the study will be a preferred long-term solution, which will consist of a strategy for implementing projects to meet the demand as it is needed. The fourth PIC board provided background on the township's municipal wells, which include six wells in Fergus and three wells in Alora. This figure is an example of a cross-section through Fergus showing the bedrock formations where the Fergus wells one, two and four are drawing groundwater from. It also shows a number of monitoring wells at various depths which are used to develop the groundwater model as well as to monitor trends in the aquifer over the long term. The current and future groundwater alternatives, for example, new wells, will be evaluated through the model to assess sustainable production rates and to look at potential impacts on the environment and interference with other wells. The fifth PIC board included a map showing the locations of the township's existing wells and spoke to the current, average and peak day demands. As well as a table listing the permitted capacity of each well. The historic average and maximum day pumping rates were compared to the current permit to take water value of fifteen thousand thirty-one cubic meters per day. Through a review of all of the groundwater studies and testing completed to date, the sustainable capacity of the existing groundwater supply system is being estimated, which will also be confirmed through modeling. We will look at opportunities to optimize this capacity, possibly including replacement of wells to address existing constraints. To estimate how much water the township will need, we first determine the residential and industrial, commercial and institutional population that is serviced by the urban distribution system in twenty sixteen and then the population that will be serviced in twenty forty-one. The water supply system must be capable of meeting the maximum day requirements, whereas diurnal peaks and emergency and fire supplies are provided through storage. The proposed maximum day factor based on historical peak pumping data is about one point seven five. The per capita average day demands were also determined by analyzing historical data and developing a reasonable but conservative rate for projecting total future average and peak day demands. This figure demonstrates that assuming that the current permitted capacity were available, additional water supply sources will be required prior to twenty thirty. However, we know that there are constraints at the existing wells which limit the amount the wells can pump to less than the permitted rates. This points to the need for the township to have a roadmap to ensure that water supply is secured for the planned community growth to twenty forty-one. The background review completed to date provides the rationale for completing the water supply master plan, which is to def- to define where and how the township will continue to will continue to get safe and reliable water for residential and ICI use from now until twenty forty-one. It also speaks to the need for protection of the quality and quantity of the groundwater resource. The draft problem and opportunity statement further outlines the study objective, which is to develop a preferred water supply solution through public and agency consultation and an implementation strategy consisting of a number of projects with timeline and budget estimates, so that the township can plan for a water supply that meets the future needs of the community. On this board, the proposed alternative solutions were outlined at a high level, including those typically included in class EAs for comparison of other alternatives, do nothing, and limit growth. Demand management and conservation are being reviewed by a specialist on our team, who is renowned for reviewing the success of conservation programs in other communities. Alternatives for new sources of water supply will include optimization of existing wells, additional groundwater resources, and local surface water sources. An evaluation of the proposed alternatives will be completed to assess the potential impact of the alternatives on the natural, social, and cultural environments using a number of criteria developed under each category. Also included in the evaluation of each alternative will be a number of financial and technical considerations. The PIC attendees were provided a high-level timeline of the process indicating point, points of contact with agencies and the public along the way, including committee of the whole meetings, tier-three CLG meetings, and a second PIC in late fall or early nineteen, twenty nineteen. And lastly, attendees were reminded of the ways that they could participate in the study and were encouraged to provide feedback. We collected some information verbally at the event, as well as seven comment forms received to date. In addition, we've had additional surveys completed online through Connect CW. To date, these have included inquiries for existing water quality information, and people have expressed opinions regarding the need to reserve groundwater for municipal use first and consideration for the limit growth alternative. Be happy to address questions?
Yeah, thanks Patty, um, appreciate that, and I'll turn over for questions. So what we're doing here, this is where we're just receiving this for information, there's no, there's no direction or anything, we just wanna make sure council is aware that this project was starting. Couple of questions that I have just off the, off the top. Um, could you just briefly explain, um, the connection between the GRCA's scope tier-three project and this long-term water master plan? Can you tell me the connection point there?
Okay, so, we're developing, um, uh, once we've established what the deficit in water supply going forward is, uh, we look, we're looking to, um, new potential groundwater wells. Um, so with use of the, the model, we're first confirming the existing sustainable capacity, which is part of their tier-three work. Um, we're looking at it under drought, um, and other conditions such as, uh, one well offline for contamination event or, or maintenance or what have you. Um, and then we're going to look at optimization of the existing wells. So some of those existing wells, uh, can't produce the capacity that's included in the permit due to water quality issues or interference effects, so we're gonna explore those a little bit more, um, look at potentially re-drilling a couple of those wells, and that will be built into the model, and they'll assess what that sustainable capacity is, uh, without, um, creating impacts to the environment. Uh, so then we take it to the next step, and we look at future areas for potential groundwater exploration, and they'll establish what that sustainable capacity is as well to ensure that it can meet the future demand.
Council?
Councilwoman? Thanks, Kelly, um, assuming the modeling is accurate, and, and that's a big assumption because so far, each study we've seen has got different results than the one before it, so we're never sure exactly what is accurate science and is, as far as hydrogeology is concerned. But if we make the assumption that everything is correct and valid and modeling is a hundred percent correct, what happens in twenty forty-two? I mean, I, I'm, that's my concern is we, we're doing all of this to twenty forty-one, and with any luck at all, this area is gonna still be around in twenty forty-two and twenty sixty-one and twenty-one forty-one. And, and what, you know, if, if, if we have enough water to meet the requirements that are projected for twenty forty-one and, you know, the, the growth is correct and we don't have any major droughts and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, um, then twenty forty-one, everything is rosy, but we're gonna keep growing, and what are we doing for modeling for the next generation and the next generation and the next generation? Because it's, water is something that, after it's gone, it's gone.
So, uh, master planning is an exercise that gives you those, um, that uses the best tools available, um, to project out to the future, but it, you can't park it and assume you're gonna use the same plan for the next twenty-five years. It's an iterative process, and it, it's renewed on a five-to-ten-year basis. So every five to ten years, you open it up again, and you say, things have changed, we haven't grown, um, the way that we thought, or there's new hydroge information, the model's better. And so you keep coming back and, and updating the master plan to the best of the abilities at the time. So it provides you with a roadmap to a certain year, and you've got it, you've got to set that point somewhere. And then you come back periodically and, and undertake that update and make sure that it's always fresh.
Councilwoman?
Just, um, yeah, that all makes sense. Um, but we have a pending decision by the provincial government which could impact water in Centre Wellington significantly coming up, that is gonna be based upon the model that is presented, you know, by the end of this year. And, so, I, I guess I'm a little worried that they're gonna take a model that has been created for a given time period, and it, twenty-five years, and, 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 and agree to allowing a water bottling license, um, when in fact, you know, the next iteration of your, of your modeling could say, whoops, that's not gonna work too well. Um, I mean, is, is there going to be some kind of caveats in your study that says, this is, you know, yeah, we're okay for now, but it's, it could be dicey to go any further in the future.
So, I guess that, when, when it comes to the model, it's the best tool we have currently. And, um, when I say we, I'm speaking on Matrix's behalf, the ones that are doing the modeling and have developed the model. Uh, but it's not as though the model's only good for a certain period of time. The model reflects current day conditions, and it models it over a long, steady-state period and determines what those impacts might be. So you're right, the model might become better over time, hopefully it does become better over time. When it comes to additional water takings, our general approach going forward in the master plan is to establish what the municipality needs to twenty forty-one, and build that into the model exclusive of any other potential takings, to first see what's required for the municipality. Once we've done that, we can put in any potential additional takings and see how that impacts the plan. Does that answer your question? Okay.
I think, uh, the, I think we do have to answer the question, um, and I think the community needs us to answer the question. Um, when it comes to water taken by commercial water modelers, what's the impact on the model? So the project has to answer that question. Councilor Danone?
Yeah, and it's, uh, I think that is an important question to answer. Um, this here long-term water study, um, just so that I have it straight, is that at twenty thirty, with the wells that we currently have, the number of wells and the ability to pump at, that is where we will peak. So if we add another well to it, then it's not the amount of water that's available, but the amount of water through those wells that this is pointing out, is that correct?
Yes, so that reflects your current permitted rates?
And, and what the wells themselves are able to pump.
Uh, yes and no, the, the, you currently have a permit for those rates, but the wells cannot, can't actually achieve some of the rates that are listed in that table due to operational conditions, water quality, interference.
That's real?
Good, thank you, and, um, so basically, as long as we're looking at this saying, at what point will we need to place another well? And, uh, where would we then place those wells through this study? And then therefore get better matrix for the long-term future of how we'll then, um, look at somebody else taking that water from those areas? So this is the first steps in that process, is that how I'm understanding it?
It is, and we've just had some preliminary discussions around how to address those future water takings to date. Um, our thinking right now is that we're, as I said, um, we're going to review the municipal requirement first, and then we'll add those into the model to see what, how that impacts that.
Councilor Mars?
I'm just looking at your slide here, I don't, I don't know what number it is, but it's the slide right after Centre Wellington Water Supply. And it denotes the, um, the Fergus wells and the Alora wells. On, on the slide, the thing that caught my eye is that the three working Alora wells, all, the water quality all meets the OW or ODWS standards. The Fergus wells, all of them, in order to reach that standard, require some kind of special treatment, uh, because of iron or some other substance in the water. What is the cause of, of the difference between the two wells? One producing water without requiring additional treatment? Maybe I'm directing this to Colin instead of you, I don't know. But, uh, I'm just wondering, should we be concerned about this in the long term? Like, what's causing the Fergus wells to require this additional treatment? Is it the depth of the well, is it just the substance under the ground? Can you just give me some answers there?
Uh, yeah, through Mayor Linton, so, um, it depends on the well, but, uh, there's two, two really, I'd, I'd say they fall into two categories. One, um, it's either a man-made condition that we're dealing with, uh, such as with the, uh, the TCE, um, that we see in the raw water at F1. Of course, we have treatment, uh, in place to remove all that TCE and get it to non-detect levels, so we're still meeting the Ontario drinking water standards at that location. Um, that's, the other locations, we're dealing with, uh, a natural, uh, naturally occurring issues. Uh, we've got, um, F5 which maybe has, or which does have some turbidity, um, uh, when we start to pump it at higher levels, and so we see the turbidity levels, uh, increasing. At, um, at F4, uh, we do know we have high iron. Um, Fergus used to be notorious for having high iron, um, in, in the supply, but, uh, a number of years ago, we put in, uh, an iron filter in place, so we, we have treatment, uh, in place there to deal with the naturally occurring, uh, iron concentrations at that locations. Um, at F7, uh, similar situation where we're starting to see the iron concentrations just kinda creep up again, these are naturally occurring, uh, in the bedrock. And, uh, and so we're actually, uh, doing a, a little treatability study, um, 'cause we may need some filtration at that location. Uh, so really, uh, and sorry, and F2 would be a, a GUDI situation, so GUDI is groundwater under the direct influence of surface water. And, uh, and, and that well is currently offline. So that one is, um, uh, the thinking is that it, it is hydraulically connected, um, to a surface water source. So that well's been offline for some time as a result. Um, so these are, uh, you know, is there anything that we can specifically point to, um, within the bedrock? Like, these are naturally occurring things, um, that just happen to be in place in, in Fergus. They're generally drawn from the same formation, um, within the bedrock, but, uh, just, uh, slightly different water quality at, at those locations. Councilor Mars?
So just to be clear then, it's, these are natural occurrences that have nothing to do with the placement of the well or the depth of the well, that we haven't caused this by anything we've done. This is just simply a natural occurrence based on geography?
Through Mayor Linton, that, that's correct, um, it's, uh, and that's why through the master plan, we're going to look at some of those constraints in a lot, in more detail. I think Patty alluded to, uh, you know, maybe if we took one of the existing wells that we're not pumping, and maybe we offset and drilled a deeper well, it went past some of those fractures that are causing the turbidity or, or have higher iron concentration. Um, there's a possibility, uh, that there, that we could address that issue. So again, that's what the master plan's looking at, there's, that would be a kind of our optimization of our existing well network. I think that's one of the first things that we wanna look at, 'cause that's, those are locations that we already have in our, our mon- our well field, our, our well network. Um, so we're gonna look at that as a first, uh, kinda early in the stages as well as an alternative.
Councilor Gitchin?
Thank you, Mayor. On, uh, page ten, uh, of the, this, the top slide, proposed alternative solutions, um, the demand management and conservation, what exactly are, I have a few questions here. What exactly is that? Is the first step of conservation not allowing bottled water plants to preserve our aquifer? Or i- if not, why would, why would we have demand management on, uh, businesses and residents imposed without first exploring not having bottled water?
So demand management and conservation typically, um, consists of programs for the consumer. So, uh, ways to reduce, um, demand by residential and the ICI sector. That doesn't exactly answer your question regarding bottled water. No.
Yeah, uh, through Mayor Linton, so, um, yeah, demand management is, you know, if we can make more efficient use of the capacity that we already have, um, demand management's one way, you know, even ramping up our leak detection program to progressively, proactively, uh, deal with leaks, um, in the distribution systems another way. Um, but, but point well taken, you know, here we are trying to make most efficient use of, of our water, um, with the perception that someone else can come in. And, and I think that's part of the policy discussion that's starting to happen at the provincial level. Um, staff are actually participating, um, in a, uh, workshop tomorrow in Guelph, dealing with some of these policy issues that the province, um, is just starting to look at. Is it gonna be first come, first served for the groundwater resource? Or is there gonna be some sort of prioritization, um, in terms of communities, you know, mandated for growth? Will there be priority, uh, for the resource for those communities? So, um, I, I guess the response is those conversations are starting to, to, to get going, and, you know, the, with through the tier-three, through the water supply master plan, uh, we can input into those discussions with some solid technical, uh, information. So, uh, hopefully that answers your question, Councilor.
Councilor Gitchin?
Thank you, Mayor, um, it doesn't answer my question, but, um, I'm just concerned that we will be making measures for demands on our residences and businesses. Um, and, you know, whether it's rationing, and there's, there's all sorts of things that happen in Guelph because they don't have water there. And so why wouldn't not having bottling be the first, the first front line of conservation of our wa- aquifer?
Uh, through Mayor Linton and, you know, uh, point, point taken, uh, again, this is a higher policy conversation, um, at the provincial level, that, that is just getting going. That's not something we as a municipality have really control on. They, you know, bottle, water, bottling, um, that chooses to use groundwater, um, they're permitted, or they would be processed through a permit to take water. And, uh, that's not something that we really have, uh, a say, um, or involvement in. It's just through this policy review at the provincial level that, uh, uh, you municipalities are starting to get a voice, um, as to, again, kinda that prioritization of the groundwater resource. So, uh, so like I guess I said, the conversation's starting.
I think, uh, it's, it's important to point out that we're doing a co- a comprehensive holistic study of, uh, long-term water supply, so we have to look at our own system first. so we have to look at our own system first. And there's a requirement that we look at how efficiently we're using our own, own water. The layer that we have to put on top of it, and then Colin's alluding to this, uh, is the political side, the policy side. This isn't a policy project, this is uh, this is a management of our water resources project. That doesn't mean that we don't do the policy stuff like lobby, the, the provincial government, like we've done already, about our, our um, challenges with their existing policy. But we're not, we're not gonna be making policy recommendations as part of a long-term water master plan, because we're doing, we're doing a holistic and comprehensive view on how we use water here, what we're gonna be into the future. We do need to understand as another layer after the fact, you know, if, if we have water, uh, commercial water bottling, what impact does that have on our water supply longer in the future? But we do have to do the other stuff too. Anything else from council? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. It's exciting to have this uh, project uh, on, uh, starting, and I think it's still up on Connect CW, so um, please encourage everybody in councils, please get um, constituents over to Connect CW to get their input on this very important project. Thank you very much, Patty. Okay, I skipped over 12, and Kerry was just about to remind me, and I didn't even need her to do it. Um, we're going back to uh, committee of the whole, we have a recommendation here, that the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held March 19th, 2018 be adopted and circulated. Move for that recommendation? Councilor Ed Lewin, second and by? Councilor Morris, all in favor? And that's Kerry. Okay, skipping now to 14, um, we have a consideration of, of a report, um, River Fest at Bissell Park. I think we saw something like this, but I think there's a little change here. Um, we'll give, uh, turn it over to Brian.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the resolution in March, uh, we need to recognize that Sunday goes to 11:00 PM. And in the resolution in March, it said 8:00 PM. Uh, River Fest has been operating to 11:00 PM on Sunday evenings for the past two years. This would be the third year for that to take place. Um, so we're bringing this back for council to uh, consider that correction in the resolution.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Any questions from council? Okay, read the recommendations, that the council of the township of Centre Wellington rescind the resolution pertaining to River Fest 2018, adopted by council after a meeting held March 26th, 2018, and that council of the township of Centre Wellington authorizes River Fest 2018 to be held in Bissell Park on August 17th, 18th, 19th, 2018, with amplification of music between 3:00 PM and 11:00 PM on the 17th, and 12:00 PM, and 11:00 PM on the 18th, and between 12:00 PM and 11:00 PM on the 19th, subject to the organizers' planning and implementing the requirements to ensure public safety as required by the Alk- Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario, Ontario Provincial Police and Centre Wellington Municipal Alcohol Policy. And that the council of the township of Centre Wellington approves River Fest 2018, scheduled for August 17th, 18th, and 19th, 2018, in Bissell Park as a significant municipal event in order to serve and sell alcohol during the event. And that the council of the township of Centre Wellington grants an exemption from bylaw 5001-05, the Township Noise Control Bylaw, from 11:00 PM to 11:30 PM on August 17th and 18th, 2018. Move for that recommendation? Councilor Fisher, second and by, Councilor McIlwain, all in favor? And that is Kerry. 14-2, River Bug, and we have a report as well from Brian.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Ken Thompson, the operator of River Bug, uh, initial year of operation last year. We did it as a one-year trial. Uh, Mr. Ken Thompson is asking to continue that business um, in the uh, format of a same commercial agreement for access to Bissell Park and Confederation Park. Um, he's also asking for a two-year term after last year being the one-year initial term. Um, I will say to you that Mr. Ken Thompson met with staff, we've been going back and forth. He did ask for uh, an increase in activity uh, based on the access of these parks in 2018 and 2019. Um, after um, discussion and consideration, uh, Mr. Ken Thompson is uh, remaining with the same hours of access and operation that he had in the inaugural year, inaugural year, inaugural year. Uh, thus it will be the same, so there'll be no increase in that activity. Um, staff just feel it's uh, uh, prudent to um, not increase the activity, as some of council may be aware. We did have some interaction from the sports fishermen, uh, when this began last year. Uh, we arranged a meeting with the uh, sports uh, fishermen, and Mr. Ken Thompson and staff attended. Um, it was a productive meeting, uh, was one that built um, respect of each other's operation. And um, so the activity continued last year. Uh, so staff feels strongly that in sticking with that level of trust and respect, uh, an increase in activity really wouldn't be warranted at this time, and Mr. Thompson agrees with that. So essentially, this is continuing that operation, the fees will remain the same. Um, just for council's interest, uh, Mr. Thompson contributed um, just over $800 uh, in revenue to um, Centre Wellington for this uh, park access agreement in 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Brian, just, I'm, I'm sure you have, I just want to be clear. I believe this year, there's a major fly fishing tur- tournament, derby event, whatever they call it, that's going to be held along the stretch of the Grand River. So it's over and above the regular activities of, of the fish, of fishers. Uh, I assume that, that that's been factored into uh, to this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and yes, thank you for pointing that out. That actually has been a discussion staff had with uh, Mr. Thompson with this year's operation. He's very much aware of the event, and uh, is being encouraged to uh, meet with the organizers once again, so we don't run into a conflict during the event, and we've met and uh, resolve any potential conflicts upfront.
Thanks, Brian. Anything else from council, Councilor Kitcher?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so are we still doing the two-year in this proposal? Because I'm just wondering why we would go to two years and not do it one year at a time like River Fest does in our other events?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, when we originally met with uh, Mr. Thompson, uh, he was looking for a much longer relationship uh, as far as an access agreement. Uh, we have other commercial operators' access agreements which are longer terms. Uh, we convinced him to do a one-year trial, just so we could feel each other out and build our relationship. Um, I will tell you that Mr. Thompson came back and he would like a longer term. Um, staff negotiated, let's uh, go for a two-year term, do an evaluation. And um, I believe that, I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Thompson, he can maybe, uh, if there's a need to address this, but it also provides him mi- albeit one more season, but another season of stability for his ad- advertising endeavors, his promotion endeavors. Um, you may or may not be aware that uh, this operation has been nominated and has re- received some uh, prestigious awards, um, and is actually uh, recognized internationally. So uh, certainly his efforts in providing a quality product and reaching out with advertising, he's looking for just a little more stability as far as the length of time.
Councilor Kitcher?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate um, the, you know, his business and his award-winning and all that, but if we, um, if we treat River Fest, which is also an event and famous and lots of tourists and stuff like that, with a one-year, why wouldn't we not, not be consistent on that? Um, just because we did have feedback from the fishermen about that, and I got three calls myself, so I'm just sort of um, concerned about that for another year, and then maybe after that, doing a two-year.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, that's not to say that uh, River Fest may get the idea and ask for a longer term. Um, I also would suggest that River Fest comes annually because of the other exemptions we ask for, such as the exemption from the noise bylaw, and that needs to be done annually. That's a different um, kettle of fish, so to speak, from Mr. Thompson's operation, and that's why it comes annually.
The alcohol, alcohol component, it's a yearly uh, license that they have to apply for, so that's where they're, part of the differences as well.
Councilor Morris?
Thank you. Um, Brian, this being a two-year contract, um, is there room for more negotiation? If, you know, circumstances warranted, like more requirements may be needed? Uh, some unforeseen circum- circumstance may occur, and is there room, once the contract is signed, is that it? Is it carved in stone now, or do you have wiggle room to negotiate further requirements if circumstances dictate it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, well certainly the contract is intended to provide the stability of a fee structure for the business. Um, so we certainly have that arrangement of the per-ride feature. Um, certainly if Mr. Thompson were to require any ancillary services not covered within the contract, that would be at a pay for uh, a fee per service type facilit- um, facilitation. Um, that didn't happen in the first year, I really don't see it happening in the second or third year, but if it did, uh, he would pay uh, for sure based on a cost-recovered basis.
Anything else from council? Okay, I'm gonna read the recommendation, the council of the township of Centre Wellington authorized the mayor and clerk to enter into an agreement with Ken Thompson, operating as Elora Ra- Ride Ri- Elora Raft Rides, permitting access in Confederation Park and Bissell Park for the purpose of operating a River Raft Adventure Business. Move for that recommendation? Councilor Rand, sorry, Councilor McIlwain, second and by? Councilor Fisher, all in favor? Opposed? And that carries. Okay, 14-3, Building Division has their 2000 annual report, drumroll please, Randy.
Thank you, uh, Mary Linton, members of council. I'm pleased uh, to present this report to you today, uh, for the year 2017. Uh, it was a, another exceptional year uh, for Centre Wellington, um, building activity, um, and certainly the Building Division. Um, a couple of things uh, I'd like to just point out in the report, and then certainly I'd be happy to take questions. Um, the number of permits we issued uh, was a new high. Uh, as you recall, 2016 was a new high, and 2015 was a new high. So we continue that trend uh, of issuing more permits uh, each year. Um, specific to the construction value, uh, you'll note that uh, it was lower than 2016, so I thought I would give you a little bit of an explanation on that. There were three big projects in 2016, uh, totaling close to $30 million on their own. Uh, an apartment building in Fergus, a condominium apartment building in Alora, and of course, the Pearl Hospitality Projects. So they were sort of the uh, the driver of the higher construction value in 2016. Uh, in 2017, uh, we issued some uh, permits to the hospital, um, sort of the uh, preliminary-type permits you would see, a foundation, a rough-in underground plumbing, uh, site servicing, uh, as well as a structural superstructure. But the bulk of that permit, the main permit, um, that's going to be issued this year, um, in the, in the coming weeks, hopefully. Um, so that will be a big driver of construction value uh, in the current year, 2018. Uh, but I did want to give you a bit of an explanation as to uh, where a bit of difference came in in terms of uh, the, the construction value between 2016 and uh, 2017. Um, other than that, I, I wanted to point out that residential uh, construction activity, uh, new houses in particular, uh, as you can tell uh, in the report, uh, it remained very strong. Um, we did uh, 350 uh, residential unit building permits uh, in, in the year. Uh, 216 of those were single-detached. Um, and uh, of course, townhouses were quite strong as well, with, with 80, and, and then some of the other types of housing that would make up the, the rest. Um, a- again, when you look at 2016, uh, the number of residential units was higher, uh, for sure, but there were two apartment buildings in that mix. Um, so um, when you, when you do apartment buildings and you, you know, you're doing 55 or, you know, so uh, dwelling units in, in one permit, um, gets the numbers up. Uh, the other thing that is trending um, higher and higher, uh, as they say, uh, is the quantity of building inspections that we're doing. Um, as we issue more permits each and every year, um, we're, we're conducting a fair amount more building inspections, so you'll notice the trend there. Um, we're getting close to 6,000 uh, building inspections last year. Um, 5,958 to be exact. Uh, that's an awful lot of activity um, for uh, Centre Wellington. And other than that, the remainder of the po- report is fairly self-explanatory, but I would be pleased to answer any questions that you have on the report.
Thanks, Randy. Questions from council? Councilor McIlwain?
Just, um, the poultry agricultural building, that is the chicken factory out in Nibberha that we're talking about there? You refer to as 1.2 million construction value?
Uh, correct, that would be the fourth line, I believe, or side road four?
Yeah, side road four.
Is it? Yeah.
Oh, no, fourth line.
Is it fourth line? Yeah, yeah, that's...
So is that, they, they're now up to about three or something, is that all of them? Or is that a, the first one, you know, I'm just curious how much, and how many more are, are on the waiting list at this point?
We don't currently have any applications for any more uh, on that property, to my knowledge. Uh, this report here, that 1.2 million, I believe that reflects two, uh, two of the barns at $600,000 each. Um, but I'm not aware that any further permits have been applied for.
Okay, read the recommendation, that the council of the township of Centre Wellington receives the 2017 annual building activity report for information dated April 23rd, 2018. Move for that recommendation? Councilor Morris, second and by, Councilor Van Lewin, all in favor? And that's Kerry. Okay, next appointment of a CBO?
Thank you, Mary Linton and members of council. Um, so as a result of uh, changes that have recently occurred in the Building Division in terms of personnel, um, it is necessary to uh, repeal the previous uh, inspector's appointment bylaw and uh, to uh, provide a new one, um, that rec- reflects uh, the current individuals who make up the uh, Building Division. Um, and so this, this is a requirement that comes out of the Ontario Building Code Act, where uh, the council of the municipality needs to appoint a chief building official and um, inspectors to carry out the duties required under the Building Code Act.
Thanks for any questions from council? Okay, read the recommendation, the council of the township of Centre Wellington authorizes the mayor and clerk to execute bylaw appointing a chief building official and building officials. Move for that recommendation? Councilor McIlwain, second and by, Councilor Van Lewin, all in favor? And that carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a heritage permit for 249 Geddes Street, and a partial demolition. Report from Marianna. Welcome, Marianna.
Through you, Mary Linton. So this report before you is regarding three heritage matters. The first being a heritage permit for 249 Geddes Street in Alora. That permit is for the addition of a sunroom slash mudroom at the rear of the building, because it is visible from, it's a corner property, uh, and is visible from the street, uh, on the side. It does require a heritage permit. So it went to the Heritage Committee on April 10th and was reviewed, and uh, there were no objections. So the Heritage Committee is recommending approval of that permit. The next two items are partial demolitions. The first is at two ninety-eight Union Street East in Fergus and it is for the demolition of a detached garage. The committee reviewed that as well at its meeting on April tenth and was determined that that garage did not contribute any significant heritage value to the property, so the committee had no objection to its demolition. And the last one is partial demolition at two forty-three Princess Street in Elora, which again is a listed property on the register, so requires approval for any demolitions and this is for demolition of a rear summer kitchen addition and a detached garage that's in poor condition. So again, it went to the April tenth meeting of the Heritage Committee with no objections to demolition.
Thanks, Mariana. Any questions from council? Counselor Kittrus?
Thank you, Mayor. On the two demolition for Union Street in Fergus and Princess Street, will those garages be replaced and will they have to go to Heritage after that?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mayor Linton. Those will be replaced. In the one instance, the existing detached will be replaced with a similar detached. And in the other case, on Princess Street, the existing detached will be, is proposed as an attached two-car garage to the house. Those do not go to the Heritage Committee for approval again because they're not designated. So if they were designated, they would require permits for the new construction and these are only approval for the actual demolitions because they're only listed.
Okay, thanks, Mariana. I read the recommendation of the Council of Township Centre Wellington approved heritage permit application HP two thousand eighteen dash zero, zero-two for the designated property municipally known as two forty-nine Geddes Street Elora pursuant to section thirty-three-four of the Ontario Heritage Act, RSO nineteen ninety, section eighteen, and that the council authorized the demolition of the detached garage of the listed property municipally known as two ninety-eight Union Street East Fergus and that council authorized the demolition of the rear addition and the detached garage at the listed property municipally known as two forty-three Princess Street Elora and that the above designated and listed properties remain on the municipal register of cultural heritage properties. Move for that recommendation? Counselor Fisher, second and by. Counselor Van Luin, all in favor? And that's carried. Okay, so moving on to section fourteen-six. Counselor Fisher has a declared conflict with this one. Demolition of fifteen eighteen nineteen twenty-one twenty-three twenty-five Ross Street Elora. Report from Mariana. Welcome, Mariana.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Linton. The owner of the six properties located at fifteen to twenty-five Ross Street in Elora has submitted a demolition request to facilitate the redevelopment of the south side lands, which are an extension of the Elora Mill redevelopment project. Project includes commercial hotel, residential, retail and office uses on the south side. The Ross Street lands were more recently acquired to be added to the development after the initial planning approvals several years ago. Since the properties are residential, they require council approval under the township's demolition control bylaw. Twenty-five Ross Street is currently listed on the municipal register, therefore providing extra time for council to consider the matter of demolition. Though all except one of the properties were identified on the former inventory of urban heritage buildings, when the register was developed, the Heritage Committee and council at that time did not feel the other properties warranted inclusion on the register. Having said that, council has the authority under the Ontario Heritage Act to designate a property at any time to protect it from demolition or alteration if it feels that it is significant to the community through its heritage value. Designation is the only way to halt demolition, once demolition notice is received. Though these Ross Street properties do not yet have the necessary planning approvals in place for development, they are considered adjacent heritage properties and require evaluation of impacts through a heritage impact assessment before any redevelopment of the Elora South lands can take place. A heritage impact assessment was submitted as required with the demolition request for these properties and was reviewed by planning staff, the township's retained heritage consultant and Heritage Centre Wellington. The Heritage Committee and staff visited the properties, deliberated the matter extensively and discussed it during the last two heritage committee meetings where the applicant and heritage consultants were present. The applicant has indicated that consideration was given to retention and incorporation of each of these buildings into the redevelopment, but their location is in direct conflict with significant trenching and grading and other site works that need to be undertaken to service the site. Relocation of twenty-three and twenty-five Ross Street was further explored at the request of the Heritage Committee as these were considered to have relatively higher heritage value than the rest. The committee requested that a structural assessment be conducted by a qualified heritage engineer to determine whether the buildings could be relocated. It was determined that they could be moved but would require significant upgrades and rehabilitation to be put to commercial use. This memo is attached to the staff report as attachment three. The applicant has indicated that the form of the buildings on Ross Street is not conducive to future commercial use and impractical and costly to move elsewhere on the site. Therefore, or off-site for that matter, therefore they are focusing significant rehabilitation efforts on the adjacent Walzer and Little Folks of Men buildings instead. They have agreed to salvage as much material as possible from the Ross Street structures if they are permitted to be demolished. The review process and other detailed considerations are outlined in the staff report and the heritage impact assessment that is attached. In summary, all of the Ross Street properties have varying degrees of cultural heritage value under the criteria prescribed by the province, mostly for their age and historical association. All are pre-confederation buildings. However, in light of all the information and the extensive review that's been undertaken regarding the identified heritage values, the project implications, mitigation measures and future reuse potential, the Heritage Committee, the consultant and staff are of the opinion that council should authorize a demolition of the Ross Street properties with the added conditions regarding salvage and a detailed commemoration strategy. I'd be pleased to answer your questions.
Thanks, Mariana. We have three delegations, but I'll permit some questions for Mariana first before we invite them to come to the front. Anything, any questions from Mariana? Counselor Kittrus?
Thank you, Mayor. What is the cost for moving these homes? Do you have a figure for that?
The applicant, Brian Blackmere, attended the last Heritage Committee meeting and had done some research and it was concluded that it was approximately three hundred thousand dollars per building to move. And that's to be put on a new foundation, as I understand it as well, though. So perhaps he could speak to that.
Counselor Morse?
Mariana, I think the last time we were in a situation like this elsewhere in the community, I asked then and I ask now, is it not to our advantage to become more proactive with our heritage assets? Is it time to create a more comprehensive heritage strategy? I know that our heritage policy is, was done a long time ago. Is it time to renew it and expand it and do something proactive so that we're not always coming back to this table with these kind of issues again and again and again?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Linton. Well, that is what we are doing and we are trying to constantly evolve our heritage register and that's why we came to council last June to add about four hundred properties. So that's one aspect of it. And in that review, all of the outstanding properties in the urban centre were looked at. So these properties, as well as many others, were reviewed in terms of their age, their construction and those criteria that we look at under the act. And at the time, the ones that were felt needed to be added were actually added and those were the ones that were presented to council. We, you know, we are working right now on a strategy for moving heritage projects forward in terms of identifying larger cultural heritage landscapes, in terms of the evolution of how the community developed and through that study, identify the areas that need to still be added to the register. But it's a continuous process. It's, you know, it's constantly evolving and we do it as resources permit. Most of the work is done by volunteers through our Heritage Committee and through assistance from us and we do have a budget now that we could actually move some of this more significant work forward in a more timely fashion.
Counselor Van Luin?
Thank you. Mariana, in this recommendation, it speaks towards the heritage strategy, commemoration strategy and other aspects to it prior to final site plan approval. Now, that site plan doesn't mean that, I just want to be sure that we're speaking the same thing, that means that the demolition will not happen prior to it as well? So it speaks to prior site plan but also prior demolition?
No, through you, if the demolition is permitted, the demolition would happen in a way that's defined through the heritage impact assessment in terms of having a salvage expert on site to determine what is significant. There were elements identified as significant in terms of the physical features. So that would be done a certain way. And then the commemoration strategy would be required. Once we know what we're dealing with, what items can be salvaged, the strategy would be developed and that would be required to be submitted prior to final site plan approval for the balance of the site.
Counselor McQuaid?
Thanks, Julie. In preserving these in situ is probably somewhat unrealistic given that they're not really reusable for anything and they aren't really in a proper location to be of a lot of value. But this kind of goes back to the discussion on the schoolhouse in McNab. If we're able to preserve parts of the different structures, can, I mean, can we work? Have you tried, or I think you said you had discussed this with the county of using the museum lands to, I mean, having an eighteen forty schoolhouse, they're sounded really attractive. Having, you know, one of these buildings up there for historical purposes on the museum land seems to be a wonderful alternative where we'll actually get some tourism value from them. And so I'm just curious, is there any discussion going on with the county to do that kind of thing or some other land, but the county seemed to be logical?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Linton. Those discussions were had, I do recall, a few times through the process of other buildings requesting demolition and I don't, I think that the museum was not interested in having those types of resources on their land. The only other opportunity that I'm aware of is we were approached by, I believe it was Waterloo, that would take buildings. Yes. But that's not within our township, no. So there are no other lands that are identified as being able to, or any interest in somebody taking them on. Yeah, we can further those discussions, certainly.
Counselor Kittrus?
Thank you, Mayor. Are these buildings wood buildings or are they stone buildings? Like, are they, can?
Through you, four of them are wood frame, I believe, and two of them are masonry, so one is a full red brick and the other one is stone, rubble stone, main floor and red brick on the second floor.
Which are the?
So the one that's listed on the register, number twenty-five, that one is brick and stone.
Okay, thanks, Mariana. I'll call on the delegations now to speak to this. And first, the first delegation that we have is Ian Rankin and Bob Jackson. So just before we start, again, I think all of you know these rules, a ten-minute presentation. Don't have to take the whole time, but you can if you want. So I don't know which one of you is going to be the spokesperson, but you got it, Bob? Okay. Welcome, Bob.
Mayor Linton, members of council, my name is Bob Jackson. I'm making this joint delegation presentation on behalf of myself and Ian Rankin to the committee, the whole, today on agenda item four point six entitled demolition of fifteen eighteen nineteen twenty-one twenty-three and twenty-five Ross Street Elora. We are opposed to the recommendation by the committee, the whole, to recommend support or support a decision by council to approve the land use planning matter authorizing the demolition of any of the structures at the properties known as fifteen eighteen nineteen twenty-one twenty-three and twenty-five Ross Street Elora. And today, this committee, the whole, is being advised by its professional planning staff and the chief administrative officer in planning report PLN two eighteen dash seventeen to not conserve but rather to recommend the council approve a land use planning matter decision to destroy by demolition all six of the adjacent identified pre-confederation homes on Ross Street Elora. It's apparent the council does not have the lawful authority to make that important land use planning matter decision to approve the demolition of any of the six adjacent identified pre-confederation homes on Ross Street Elora. It's also apparent that a decision by the committee, the whole, to recommend a decision by council to approve the land use planning matter authorizing the demolition of any of those structures on Ross Street would be contrary to the mandatory statutory responsibilities and obligations of this municipal council under part one of the Ontario Planning Act and its wise use and management of resource policies two point six point one and two point six point three of the Ontario Planning Act's provincial policy statement two fourteen. And contrary to the upper tier and lower tier municipal official plans and contrary to the township's ethical code of conduct by law. Concerned citizens of Centre Wellington now have two new and more accessible and effective means to address situations where municipal council fails to fulfill its mandatory statutory obligations and responsibilities which include complaints of ethical misconduct under the new Township Code of Ethical Conduct by Law which was unanimously passed by the council in October two seventeen and which holds members of council responsible for complying with all applicable legislation and policies pertaining to their position as elected officials. And of course, appeals to the new local planning appeal tribunal, which has replaced the OMB and which now focuses on the mandatory statutory obligation of municipal councils to make land use planning matter decisions which are consistent with the Ontario Planning Act, its provincial policy statement two fourteen and official plans. The mayor, the members of council and the general public ought necessarily to be able to rely on planning reports which provide substantiated, comprehensive and complete advice on all land use planning matters so that amongst other things, members of council can fulfill their due diligence obligations pertaining to their obligations for complying with all applicable legislation and policies pertaining to their position as elected officials. However, the land use planning matter advice before you today provided in the township planning report PLN two eighteen dash seventeen is materially incomplete and misleading to the mayor, members of council and the general public. In particular, that report fails to adequately inform members of council as to all of their responsibilities for complying with all applicable legislation and policies pertaining to their position as elected official including complying with part one of the Ontario Planning Act and its wise use and management of resource policies two point six point one and two point six point three of the Ontario Planning Act's provincial policy statement two fourteen as they pertain to this important land use planning matter decision. If we had more than ten minutes today, at this point, I would set out the particulars listed of the material deficiencies of the planning report, which I've referred to, which are relevant to this land use planning matter decision. Instead, we'll present as many of these as we can at the conclusion. In any event, I've already emailed the entire present- In any event, I've already emailed the entire presentation to the mayor, each member of council and key members of staff. In conclusion, we would respectfully submit, on the one hand, if you do understand even part of what we've presented or submitted by email today, then you will also understand that this committee of the whole does not have the lawful authority to recommend the council approve the staff recommended land use planning decision authorizing the demolition of any of the structures of the properties known as fifteen eighteen nineteen twenty-one twenty-three and twenty-five Ross Street in Alora. On the other hand, if you do understand uh what we've presented or submitted by email today, then it's apparent that the township planning staff, sorry, if you do not understand, then it's apparent that township planning staff have failed to provide this municipal council with a clear substantiated advice necessary for members of council to fulfill all of their due diligence obligations arising from their oath of office, rising from the township ethical code of conduct by law which holds members of council responsible for complying with applicable legislation and policies pertaining to their position as elected officials and arising from their statutory responsibilities and obligations under part one of the Ontario Planning Act uh and its uh wise use and management of resources policies uh of the Ontario Planning Act's provincial policy statement two fourteen. Moreover, if you in any way suspect that you may not be in a position as members of council fulfill all of your due diligence obligations under this important land use planning matter decision, then you would appear to be ethically and duty bound to return this matter to staff with directions to revise the advice contained in planning report two eighteen uh dash seventeen so that the mayor and members of council can be put in a fully informed position necessary to fulfill their due diligence obligations. So in what remains of my ten minutes, I'll list some of the particulars deficiencies of a planning report PLN two eighteen dash seventeen. So it does not provide advice that a decision of council municipality in respect of the exercise of its authority that affects a planning matter shall be consistent with the policy statements issued under section, subsection one that are in effect on the time or the date of the decision. It does not provide advice that comments, submissions or advice affecting a planning matter that are provided by council of a municipality shall be consistent with policy statements issued under subsection one that are in effect on the date of the comments, submissions or advice are provided. It does not provide advice that all six of the subject adjacent pre-confederation homes are significant built heritage resources as defined in the Ontario Planning Act's provincial policy statement two fourteen. It does not provide advice that all six of the subject adjacent pre-confederation significant built heritage resources are located in the heart of, and are an integral part of a significant cultural heritage landscape as defined in the Ontario Planning Act's provincial policy statement two fourteen. It does not advise that all six of the subject adjacent pre-confederation significant built heritage resources are located or on protected heritage property as that term is defined in the Ontario Planning Act's provincial policy statement two fourteen. And there are a number which you can see because you have the email, which I won't go into at this point. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to um Carol, and you can, we, we'll bring the mic to you. Oh, Daniel, are you gonna? Daniel said, okay. Does it, yeah, Daniel, come on up. Oh, no.
Now, before I start, I have a PowerPoint. And, and, and how will I advance that on this? Okay, so Mayor Linton, members of council and staff. Uh much of what I have to say uh right now is by way of questions rather than statements. Starting with, does our two thousand five official plan still have meaning? And if so, why isn't it being honored? These are not very large, I'm sorry, I have got a slightly larger one here. This is from the land use plan Alora Salem Fergus uh in the municipal official plan. And it does show a red area and the legend identifies this red area as a heritage area. And you can plainly see that Ross Street falls within that heritage area. Uh so uh as opposed to the previous focus on uh the Ontario Planning Act, I'd like to talk more about the official plan. And as I said, these are genuine questions I have about the official plan, because I'm just a layperson, I'm not involved in, you know, uh all the procedures that go on, but what I do see when I read this official plan seems strangely at odds with what's happening with Ross Street. Uh so I just want to highlight a couple passages from the uh official plan, page one. The official plan is a policy statement that sets out the township's views on how land should be used. It provides direction for future planning activities. Community values referred to on this page include, uh number three is small town atmosphere, five, culture and heritage, and six, heritage and architecture. On page five, section C two, cultural heritage resources, goals and objectives, quote, "to protect the township's heritage resources from neglect, deterioration, demolition, alteration, redevelopment, or changes in use which threaten," there referring to the heritage resources, "existence or integrity." I, I'm not quite sure here, again, it's a question, how uh Landmark Pearl's allowing our firefighters to practice by chopping holes in the roofs of some of the houses on Ross Street fits into uh the stated objective of uh preventing or protecting heritage resources from neglect, deterioration and demolition, because it sounds to me a bit like uh planned uh demolition through neglect. Uh it's page nine, uh section C eighteen, Heritage Centre Wellington includes, quote, number four, "to make recommendations on the designation of heritage buildings and structures and the designation of heritage conservation districts under the Ontario Heritage Act." So far to my knowledge, the only heritage conservation district which we have in Centre Wellington is the Brock Avenue Heritage District. Uh in spite of concerted efforts by residents of the Victoria Crescent neighborhood to establish uh a heritage district there, uh this citizen-generated initiative has been stymied by the municipal government over the years. Uh clearly Ross Street should have been protected a long time ago. In spite, uh or uh C two twenty-one Cultural Heritage Landscapes reads, "Heritage resources encompass more than old buildings. They include complete landscapes as well. Cultural heritage landscapes provide a sense of place and dignity to the community." And this is followed by tourism goals and objectives to protect and enhance the natural heritage assets of Centre Wellington which are a vital part of our tourism heritage, or image rather. So here are a couple slides of Ross Street. Here we are today because Heritage Centre Wellington has acquiesced to the demolition of twenty-five Ross Street listed as registered, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one and twenty-three Ross Street, non-registered, not, rather, non-listed. Actually, given that we're discussing the only extant street of pre-confederation workers' houses in Alora, that all but one of these buildings is not listed seems to contradict the policies set forth in our own official plan. Uh so we're in danger right now of losing a whole heritage uh landscape uh as referred to in the official plan. Uh in fact, another thing I never quite understood and I would really love to have explained to me someday is how uh the township was able to give Ross Street itself to Landmark Pearl. Doesn't Ross Street belong to the people of this community? I, I never have understood how a township can give away a street. It's difficult to believe that with political will and imagination on the part of the developer, this street could not have been safe. Uh you know, you can go to all kinds of historic villages in uh in Canada and south of the border. Uh one example, Hale Homestead outside Cleveland where I grew up. Uh houses were saved so they could show a particular craft, you know, one of them candlemaker, another one a weaver and dyer, another a blacksmith, bakers, et cetera. Uh it doesn't seem to me that there's been much imagination put into this because it's pretty obvious that Landmark wants to make this into a parking lot. I see the destruction of Ross Street as the opening volley of a new phase in the war on local heritage. For starters, a member of Heritage Centre Wellington recently told Carol that there are no designations south of the river, though obviously this would exclude the Drill Hall which is a national designation, I believe, and presumably the recent designation of the old uh log schoolhouse on McNabb. Uh so what we've recently seen in the vicinity of the uh red heritage zone that I previously showed uh is, is ominous. Uh the demolition of fifty-four Victoria, which was also within the same red zone, not listed in the two thousand thirteen M H R inventory, but previously listed in the seventh Heritage Centre Wellington inventory. Uh the site is already being excavated for what we hear through the grapevine will be a three-story boutique hotel, and I'm not aware of a building permit having been issued for that, even though the excavation is under, underway. A- and then we also see the, the proposed uh growth management study targeting this entire area uh in the name of a node. A recommendation from the growth management study, community node areas identified from uh for Alora as an area at the intersection of Highway seven and Wellington twenty-one. The goal of the nodes is to create a place where people and transportation routes congregate in higher concentrations of residential employment and commercial uses in order to encourage redevelopment and intensification in nodes. The zoning bylaw should be amended to allow for a height increase from four to six stories with a minimum of two stories. Not only do the community nodes serve as a location for increased density, they also serve as a gateway to the township. Uh if we want to sort of visualize what these nodes are going to involve, this is half the projected six-story height of the buildings that could be constructed from Wellington twenty-one and Highway seven all the way down to the parking lot that's replacing Ross Street. Uh and I leave it to people to form their own opinions about the aesthetic merits of the building I'm showing right now. I know time's limited, so I'll just conclude by going to the R T O four uh website. Uh this is uh for Alora and Fergus and it outlines as part of the mandate of regional tourism organization for uh certain initiatives to uh illuminate the natural and heritage assets, to strengthen the tourism product offering and interestingly, increasing community involvement and support. So what's the point of the provincial government funding R T O four through our taxpayers' dollars if Centre Wellington is going to allow developers to demolish the very heritage ass- assets that the township and R T O four are touting? Uh and recently I received an email from the Alora Fergus Destination Animation Strategic Co-Investment Project which has already enabled six new experiences in our community that highlighted the D N A of our community, natural setting, heritage town and arts and culture. And uh I, I wonder, you know, if we talk about D N A, that's all about ancestry. If our community's D N A is derived from natural setting and heritage, then why are we gathered here discussing the violation of an entire heritage landscape through the destruction of a whole street of pre-confederation houses? You can't pass on what's erased. So the place to draw the line in the sand is with this application that would destroy an entire street of pre-confederation houses. A debate, by the way, which would never be happening in Niagara on the lake. Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel, um moving on to Carol, who can, can we'll bring, we'll bring that.
Mister Mayor, Chair and members of the committee of the whole. I'd like to begin with an interjection that, about the question that was given to Mariana about, I think it was Kirk McElwain, about the county providing a place for lost buildings. It was nearly three years ago that I went to county and proposed an outdoor museum. Either on the county lands around the current museum or elsewhere, and they're not interested. We've been trying to find a home for a log house which has marvelous history and finally, I think I found it, but it's taken three years. We desperately need an outdoor museum. So if any wealthy person who thinks they're going to die soon wants to give some land, it would be wonderful. It might give you a lot more peace and quiet. Anyway, Ross Street. Firstly, I completely endorse the facts that have been given by the three speakers before me. They've stated many of my concerns, so I can be briefer. As I said before on other occasions, Alora and now Centre Wellington is composed of several factions. Those who've been here for several generations and generally do not speak out publicly. But believe me, in private, their opinions are very noisy and when it comes to the vote, they make their views known. Then there are those of us who are from a long way away and we're known as from away and will always be from away. We tend to make a little more noise than the first group. Thirdly, there are those who are really new. Some state their views and some do not. It has however become evident when forming the mid-grand heritage preservation group that there are perhaps many more, especially in the Fergus area, who've not made their voices known about heritage buildings and landscapes. But now, through an online page mastered by Pat Maston and backed by me, we have seventy-five members and another three hundred and ninety-four supporters of this preservation group who say they want to preserve what is left of our heritage buildings and landscapes. Centre Wellington claims that through R T O four, they want a quaint little tourist village. But a quaint little tourist village does not exist without old buildings. And we are now losing them fast during the past few years and apparently today. Not only is the township aware of this loss, but curiously, is now considering through H C W, under the request of Landmark, to demolish an entire pre-confederation street, not just one house, two houses, a whole bloody street. Something's wrong, something's very wrong. Are we pretending that we want this heritage aura for tourist money, but in fact allowing ourselves to be fiscally manipulated by developers whose funds line our coffers to assuage their demands hoping that no one will notice or not make a big noise? Or what? When you take a step back and look at our village, and that of Fergus, and equally important, the rural buildings outside the town envelopes, consider some of the buildings that we've lost during the last few years in Fergus. But that, these are only a few, I can't remember them all. Wooden frame buildings on James Street between Garifra X West and Forfar. Saint George opposite the old Roman Catholic Church. This building was actually where Saint John A McDonald stayed before speaking at the old drill shed on Saint Andrew West. The old drill shed was demolished in nineteen eighty-three. Another on Saint Patrick's Street in the four hundred block. In Alora, fifty-four Victoria Street, a Victorian brick house which had previously been listed, but somehow the listing was removed around two hundred and thir- two thousand thirteen. A cut stone house on Gaddy Street near the corner of Stump Street. The original Wilson House in the flats, which was erroneously described as rotted, but which the salvage company has now re-erected and it's for sale, logs only, um in very good condition, thirty-nine thousand. They'll transport it for a hundred miles from. And whilst in that area, there was a two-story stucco cupboard house, which although the excuse for the G R C A was that which although the excuse for the GRCA was that it was in the floodplains, a monster home has suddenly appeared on the site. There are always excuses or reasons, but in fact, they've been very well planned. In the case of Ross Street, the excuses are frail. Frail because in our present age, when buildings can be easily raised and lowered or with a little imagination, drains, sewers, and water supplies, rerouted without extra cost, there is no excuse for demolition. Likewise, some of the demolition certificates that have been issued during the last few years, claiming the building had rotted or was not historic significance, frequently when it was the oldest building in the area, not rotted and for the reason demolition, had been completely inaccurate. Another problem is that many of these developers have been allowed to come into this area have very little vision, no imagination, and even less knowledge of the difference between a bright and shining building, often not built to last more than thirty years, as compared to an older, well-built, and carefully renovated structure with a patina. Someone who's never looked carefully enough at a beautiful artwork or well-constructed older building, such as a well-built Victorian home, which can be updated with great care to provide all the mod cons, may not know what I'm talking about. But they should do, especially if they're developers. Which takes me back to Ross Street. The pre-Confederation houses, well-built but left to deteriorate, however still salvageable and in good example of the area, which cannot be lost. These structures can be saved, and with a little imagination, and by the way, nowhere near the cost that Mr. Blackmere quoted. I, two years ago, got a quote for moving a schoolhouse, a stone schoolhouse in Bellwood, and it was something like two hundred thousand. It's an enormous building compared to those little buildings. So it's... These structures can be saved and with little imagination, become an asset to developers at the same time as becoming a perfect example for tourists, residents, and architects to admire. They could easily be turned into boutique shops, allowing parking in between, around, et cetera. If Ross Street goes, the envelope of the village will shrink. This may well be the plan. I don't know. At this moment, I feel that it's critical for us to recognize many more buildings on the south side of the river, not only the pre-Confederation schoolhouse on McNab, but the two buildings that were built by the first doctor and the first minister, plus the building that's now the doctor's office, and so many more. There are several others within the metres of these sites, and they must also be recognized, or there will not be a cutesy village for tourists. Ross Street was a vital part of Alora some years ago, the homes of those who were the essential workers of the Walser and Kiddecar factories, a very vital part of Alora. Are we discriminating because these homes were the homes of workers? Surely we're not going to preserve only elitist examples? Despite several requests, the issue of Ross Street has never been brought to H C W until now. I wonder why? I believe that many of the guidelines of the publicly-founded RTO four, within Centre Wellington has a partnership agreement, have been ignored, thus allowing the situation to occur. Moreover, staff is even now not prepared adequate research on the street, but give it away, given it away regardless. Lastly, please can someone explain to my simple mind how an entire street suddenly changed hands from the township to Landmark Pearl? It was never explained. Taking into account these questions, I put to you and the fact that essential information is missing, I ask on behalf of the members of the Mid Grand Heritage Preservation Group and myself that you place a demolition permit in limbo and list Ross Street in its entirety, and that proper research is undertaken on the street and surrounding area before any thoughts of demolition can be reconsidered, even if staff and some councillors do not see the value in pre-Confederation houses that were built for the workers of the area. These houses have a place in history, and this place should be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you, delegations. We also have Brian Blackmere from Pearl Hospitality here as well. If there's any additional questions for them and/or... Yeah, I'll let Brian respond to some of those questions that came up. Thanks.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Linton, members of council. That was my intent in being here this afternoon, was to answer questions. Obviously, there's a few that have been tabled by the delegations, and I think there was a few that you had posed to Mariana that I may be able to help with. So outside of saying I'd just like to clarify, we are not a developer. We are an owner-operator. We don't go around developing properties and then leaving town. That's why we have been very careful and committed to what we've been doing here in Alora. We're not going to be disappearing. We're going to become part of this community, in fact, very shortly, with the opening of the Alora Mill. So that's a very important distinction. Back when I was a developer, I could understand the labeling that was going on here today. It's one thing to be someone who develops something, makes promises, and then has an oath, and then leaves the community. That's not our gameplay. We are here to stay, and we need to stand behind what we say we're going to do. So we've been very careful in that regard. In terms of the Ross Street houses, when those first came into play, we did our due diligence. We checked the Heritage Register, not designated, one that was listed. At the time, we couldn't even find out the criteria as to why they were listed, twenty-five was listed. So as far as we're concerned, since the time that we acquired those properties, dealt with those many property owners to today, we've simply been following the rules, not what should have been, but what has been in place. So I just wanted to make that very clear before we get into the questions.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Questions from council? Council kitchen?
Thank you, Mayor. This question isn't directly for you. I have several questions, but this one is about the legality of all the information that was mentioned by Mr. Jackson. Is that accurate? I'm just asking the planners here.
What part of that information? There was a lot of things said, so can you be a little bit more specific?
Well, that we were required to receive all the information and assorted like that. Like, there was a lot in that package, but I'm just wondering about the cited Planning Act aspects of that.
Thank you. Through you, I'll try to answer the question. There was a lot of reference made to land use planning decision, which this really is not technically. This is a demolition permit. So it falls under the Ontario Heritage Act in terms of the listed property and that authority given to council. Council has the authority to designate properties at any time, whether they're listed or not. But the provincial policy statement is meant to be read in its entirety, and if you read it, the very beginning says that. So there are all sorts of matters that must be considered in the provincial policy statement, not just heritage, but economic development, housing. There are, you know, several other policies that need to be considered, and heritage is just one of those. So the... That's what we attempted to do in terms of the way we addressed the matter in the report, followed all of the procedures that we have in place in terms of how a matter comes before council when a demolition request is received, and goes through the Heritage Committee, which actually speaks for the community in terms of heritage matters in this community. So the council, you know, typically will turn to the Heritage Committee when asking those questions, and the committee does its best in terms of reviewing all the information that's received and providing council with a recommendation, which is what they've done.
Yep, Paul, council kitchen?
Is this area of Ross Street a heritage district, as they say?
Through you, we only have one heritage district, and that's on Brock Avenue in Fergus. We have what's been identified as a heritage area in our official plan, and that's an area that's been drawn with a higher concentration of heritage buildings. But that provides some extra policy guidelines in terms of when considering projects and heritage matters in the area. But that heritage area doesn't have any protection. It's not a heritage district per se under the Ontario Heritage Act. Doesn't have guidelines in place and is a conceptual framework with guidelines rather than actual heritage district.
Council kitchen?
This is for Brian. The quote that was stated as three hundred thousand dollars per house, did you get multiple quotes, or was that in?
No, in fact, I only got one, and there's a reason for that, because there are about a handful of house-moving firms in Ontario. Most of them are fairly busy, many of them dealing with traditional farm homesteads, where there's a true family sentimental value associated with the building. And they were probably my best source of information, the contractor himself. He cut right to the chase. He said, "You know what? If you throw enough money at it, we can move anything." That's not the point usually. He said, "It's an economic decision to move a building, but usually if it's going to be moved in the face of those economics, it's going to be trumped by sentimentality." So if the family really wants to, they'll throw an inordinate amount of money at moving a building, where if you're just making a business decision, you wouldn't do that. So he gave me some pretty good guidelines. He said, "You know, with these structures, which are frail to begin with, you've got to spend a lot of money to rehabilitate and support those structures internally before you go about lifting them." So a bit different than a very stable stone building, for instance. That was the first big expense. The second was simply the method of jacking the building out of off its existing foundation, getting it onto the beams, getting it onto the truck. Once you start moving it on the truck, the costs become negligible because it's already on the vehicle. Secondly was, if you're going to move it anywhere locally, you better bump your foundation excavation to about twenty-five grand because you're going to be a bedrock, and that makes sense. And the really big one was bringing those buildings up to code from where they currently sit, which means a total gut and a total rebuild. And that was running at about a hundred and twenty dollars a square foot, so you're almost in new build territory with that. So you can see how it creeps up. And for us, if we could use those buildings in any aspect of our business, it might make sense to move them to another location. But I'd just be moving a building to another location that we still can't use, and that's a problem for us. And that's why, since two thousand and twelve, when you're looking at our concept plan, we're just going about implementing what we said we were going to do in two thousand and twelve. This is just the next phase of that.
Anything else, council morse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, I've been around a long time. I can't tell you how many hearings like this I've sat through. And it does get a bit frustrating after a while, quite honestly. But I think I do understand the importance of the delegation's comments to us today because, in reality, heritage is a symbol of our history. It's a visual of what once was. And so that's important because we need to connect with the past to remember how we got to the present. And as one wise man said, if you forget your history, you're doomed to repeat it. And there's not always a lot of good stuff back in our history. But my question to you is, what has Pearl Hospitality or your company done to minimize the destruction of Alora's history? Now, I know that eras come and eras go, and, you know, progress is progress, and we can't live the way we always lived. But can you just outline for us what steps you've taken to minimize the damage to Alora's history?
I guess the steps that we've taken, through you, Mr. Mayor, the steps that we've taken has really been to evaluate what we can contribute as a company to this area. And that, for us, was very simple. The previous industrial heritage that exists on the south side drew us immediately to the little folks of administration building. It drew us immediately to what we could do with the walls we're building, and what we could do to bring people back to the river on the south side, which historically didn't happen. You may recall that the historic layout of buildings on the south side were all industrial buildings. They were built right up to the river. We're trying to bring the people to the river and recreate money. Some of it is new build, but it's all stone. And that's something that this area is famous for. Now, you could find other developers coming in, and they're not going to be using traditional stone. They're going to be using knockoff, modern, man-made products, for the most part, I would think. We've done out of our way to make sure that we're using natural stone, and that is our commitment going forward. In fact, we're getting a little desperate for some more natural stone to use. So, you know, I think we've been trying to tread a fine line. And unfortunately, when we're looking at the Ross Street structures, and we did, we can't find any place for them in our business model. Now, that area is not just becoming a parking lot. It's not that we don't need parking in this community. I mean, we're struggling to provide interim parking anyway, but it's going to become our grand entrance into the development from Wellington Row Seven. It's an important part of the future of our development, and we've been focusing on that for years. The salvage operation that's been alluded to in the Heritage Report is very important because not only do we catalogue and inventory those pieces, but our designers, our architects, begin to tell us where we can reuse them and have them part of the interpretation of the area. That's part of our commemoration strategy. So it may not be perfect in everybody's eyes, but I think we've worked out a really good plan with the Heritage Committee. A lot of that was with their assistance. I didn't come up with all this because I'm not a heritage planner. I barely understand exactly. I don't appreciate it as fully as some of these folks. But I do know that we're trying to accommodate everybody to some extent. It's not perfect, I agree, but that's where we're going with it.
Yes, Brian. Yes, Mike?
This is probably a question for maybe both you and Mariana. I'm not sure. But you've spoken of the commemoration, is it called commemoration plan?
Commemoration strategy.
Strategy, yeah. And that is still to be developed. Is that correct? So it'll include the preservation of as much as you can, I guess. And will it also include historical plaques and that type of thing then in that area? So that there will be a good storyboard?
Exactly, yes. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We've, in fact, I authored one for the spa on the north side. And what we did with that was I went back through all of the historical pictures of the various iterations of building form that took place out on that cliff face over the years, and we came up with a really wonderful collage over the years of what it has been and where it came from. And it did metamorphosize quite a bit, culminating in what it is today. And you can see the elements that are built into that. And once again, the Heritage Committee was a huge resource in coming up with that strategy. So, yes, we were committed to doing all of that and exploring anything that is worthy of use in interpretation. And there's a lot to work with on Ross Street.
Anything else from council? Okay, I'm going to read the recommendation. The council of township Centre Wellington authorize the demolition of the structure at the properties municipally known as fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-five Ross Street, Alora, pursuant to section thirty-three of the Planning Act in accordance with bylaw two thousand and seven, guys, zero, two, one, and that twenty-five Ross Street, Alora be removed from the municipal register as a cultural heritage property, and that the recommendations for dismantling, salvage, and photo documentation for fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-five Ross Street, Alora, as outlined in the Heritage Impact Assessment dated April two thousand and eighteen, prepared by Robinson Heritage Consulting be followed, and that commemoration strategy for fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-five Ross Street, Alora... nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-five Ross Street Elora be submitted for approval to Heritage Centre Wellington prior to the final site plan approval for the redevelopment of Elora South Incorporated lands. Have a mover for that recommendation, please. Council Van Lewen, second to by, Council Mackway, all in favor? Opposed? And that carries. I wanted to make sure that you give, uh, a shout out to the Heritage Centre Wellington group for all the work that you do on this project right from day one, and, and Brian , uh, mentioned it, um, that everything that, uh, we, we have done on that project, everything that Pearl's done, has been in concert with, uh, Heritage Centre Wellington, appreciate all the work that they've, extra work they do, they're all volunteers, and we appreciate those, so please pass that on. Thanks to delegates for coming and presenting to us today. Okay. Moving on to, um, last item here, fourteen, seven, Centre Wellington Small Business Centre, we have a report from our Economic Development Officer, Pat. Welcome back, Dawn. Did you remember where we were here? Welcome, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor Linton. Um, I just wanted to let, I, I will be brief, because this meeting has gone long, but I just wanted to, to indicate that, uh, small businesses, big businesses, Centre Wellington, ninety-one percent of our businesses have fewer than twenty employees. Given that, we've been working with the Business Centre of Guelph, Wellington for the past eighteen months to expand services for small business startups and support in Centre Wellington. We currently have a small business advisor, uh, in the township one day a week, half a day in, in Elora and half a day in Fergus. Uh, in the past, uh, two, three months, they have been, they've become extremely busy doing, um, business consultations with startup businesses here. The township currently owns the, uh, former tourism office in Fergus, and it's open daily, has a public washroom. The location in downtown Fergus is centrally located, um, and is easily accessible to township residents. We began exploring the possibility of a small, actual small business centre here, um, with the advent of some management changes that happened at the Guelph, uh, the Business Centre of Guelph, Wellington, and at the time, I'd like to introduce the new executive director of the, uh, Business Centre for Guelph, Wellington, Crystal Maines. You may, uh, recognize her from Innovation Guelph, and she is now the new, uh, executive director. And we've been discussing this project for, um, a few months now, and, uh, we are here to answer the questions.
Thank you very much, Pat, and welcome.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Council Mackway?
This is five days a week now?
Five days a week, yes.
Okay. Is that, we used to have it for a couple of days a week when, when they were next door here on the base, there was a library, and, um, it was a good, good addition to the community then, so good to see you back there.
Yeah, thanks, good to see you.
Just a quick question, um, how do we advertise to folks that the services are available?
We have currently been using, um, so, social media, uh, Kendra has been very helpful in getting it out on our, um, township, uh, social media accounts. We've also been using, uh, the Booster Magazine, which has actually been incredibly helpful. Every once, it's in the Booster, everybody sees it in the business community, um, and it's largely because of, uh, stuff that we've been doing in the Booster that, um, we've seen such an uptick in, um, business consultations. Granary. All right, we've been doing it on the ground as well. Yeah.
Anything else from council? Okay, I have a recommendation, you have the council of township Centre Wellington authorize the mayor clerk to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Business Centre of Guelph, Wellington for the establishment of a small business centre in Centre Wellington to be located at one sixty Provost Lane. We're for that recommendation. Council Kitcher, second to by, Council Van Lewen, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Thanks for sticking around for so long, by the way, appreciate that. Um, we just have an information item, uh, committed the whole tracking sheet, any questions from council about that? Council Mackway?
Thanks, Charlie. Last month, I suggested that if the, if, uh, staff had made a conscious decision to ignore broadband initiatives, that it could be removed from the tracking sheet, and I see it's been removed, so I'm just curious, who made the conscious decision? Was it the Economic Development Task Force, or was it individuals on staff? Cause I, I, to me, um, ignoring broadband initiatives in the township is, uh, is ignoring the wonderful, um, investment by Whitman on providing, um, fibre to the, to the home for every home in Fergus and Elora, and I, it's, it's a, it's an advantage that we have over virtually everybody else in the southern, southwest of Ontario, and I don't know why we would be ignoring it, just curious.
Well, I think if I remember back, um, there was council direction to remove it because it was part of what we were already doing, so there wasn't anything specific that was coming out of it, um, so we just knew it was rolled into what the Economic Development Task Force and staff are already doing.
I don't remember that, uh, actually being discussed at the time, and I'm curious to what you're doing with broadband initiatives, because I certainly haven't seen any sign of it.
Council Van Lewen? I don't see anything on the agenda referring to that, it's just whether or not it's on the tracking sheet. Council Van Lewen?
Yeah, we are working on that, um, broadband, working towards Bellwood, um, some of the, there's a lot of that information after today's meeting that's out of my head, but, um, trying to, when we were looking to get Wi-Fi for, uh, high-speed out to Bellwood, high-speed to Embraha, different aspects where we support with Whitman and with other ones to try to, you know, promote broadband out into the community in further areas, I don't know which piece, but we do, we are working within some of that stuff.
Uh, second question, al- also on the tracking sheet, um, the line item C A O performance reviews, uh, the meeting date that where that was introduced has changed to last month, and it's been on the tracking sheet for a year and a half or so, so, um, curious why that is.
Um, the C A O, uh, component was approved by council, uh, it was just brought up at the last meeting with regards to when the timing was, um, so it was on the tracking list, it came off because we did go through the report, and council did approve that, it was just brought up last month as to the timing, uh, and Sandra and I are working on that and looking to bring that forward next month.
Sorry, I, um, what was approved by council as far as the C A O performance review is concerned?
The process and the forms, uh, council did, uh, review that back, I believe it's November last year, um, and so council did approve that new process. Um, Sandra and I have been working on that, and we will be bringing that forward to council as part of the review process, uh, beginning next month.
Okay, um, and I think that's all we have on the agenda. Um, a motion to adjourn. Council Kitcher, second to by, Council Van Lewen, all in favor, and we're adjourned. Thanks for...